You've taken the time to to join us before we get started this evening. I'll have to. Okay, before we get started this evening. I have to read our determination. Of not having an anchor location. So let me read that so we can begin official officially. So pursuant to Utah Code Section fifty-nine dash two dash four oh seven. The mayor of North Ogden City hereby determines that conducting an electronic meeting. With an anchor location without a lack, excuse me. An anchor location with an anchor location presents a substantial risk. To the health and safety of those who may be present at the anchor location. This determination is based upon code changes in fifty-nine dash two dash four oh seven. Approved by the Utah Legislature Regarding the Open Meetings Act. Covid nineteen cases and the need for caution and people meeting together. The North Ogden City meetings of North Ogden City. In January of twenty twenty-two and February of twenty twenty-two. Will be held electronically and will have will not have a physical location. All attendees will connect remotely and links for public participation. Are available on the North Ogden City website. So with that, we'll ask Councilmember Barker. This evening to offer either an invocation, a thought or a reading. And then subsequently lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
We'll start with an invocation. Our dear heavenly Father, we're grateful for the opportunity to gather this evening. We're grateful for the technology that we have that. In times of need, we can meet individually as a group and that we can still share ideas about our city and how to make it better. We're grateful for the citizens that are involved in that. Voice our concerns and how to help us make these decisions and these things we say in Jesus Christ, amen.
Alright, repeat after me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States.
The United States of America.
And to the Republic and which is one nation under God.
Invisible with liberty and.
With liberty and just.
Thank you, Councilmember Barker. We appreciate that. This evening, we're privileged to have with us Kirby Glad, who's going to provide some training for us. On the open and fair meetings. Law, so John, if you could let Kirby in and we'll proceed. There Kirby's gonna take approximately forty-five minutes. And then we'll proceed to our next presentation by the Children's Justice Center. So Kirby, you're with us.
Okay, how about now? Can you hear me?
Yes.
Excellent.
And you should be able to share your screen as well.
Excellent, thank you. Let me see if I can successfully do that. Okay, this is gonna boot you off. There we go. And there we are. Okay, can you see a slide that says open and fair meetings with Robert's Rules of Order? So this is slightly different with all due respect, Mr. Mayor. This isn't about the fair, the open meetings law. This is about using Robert's Rules of Order. In a fair and open meeting, if I may make that correction. So just to introduce myself, I'm a professional parliamentarian, which you probably never knew there was such a thing. I'm registered and certified by the National Association of Parliamentarians. I'm one of only three that have this. Top level of certification in the state. And it's my privilege to be asked today to give you some information about having better meetings, so. You could ask, why do we need better meetings? It's probably obvious. If you've ever been to a meeting where. You, at the end of the meeting, you said, huh, what did we do? Or if you find yourself during a meeting saying, well, what is going on now? Or did we accomplish anything? Or you know, that certainly was a long meeting, but what did we get out of it? Then you would like to have better meetings. And this applies, of course, to your work, to your, to your. City Council voluntary work that you're doing. Or paid, I don't know if you're paid or volunteer, but either way, it's not enough. And to to all the meetings that we have in our lives, we want to talk about what are some ways of making them more effective, more efficient. And frankly, more fun. So I'm always often asked, what are Robert's Rules of Order? Because we hear this talked about a lot of times and and. Everyone is not necessarily clear what it is. So first of all, there is a book. It's not just out of, you know, people's imagination. There is a book, Robert's Rules of Order, which is about seven hundred and fifty pages. And if you want to be a parliamentarian, then this is a book that you need to study. This is what the certification exams are given out of. This is what you need to know backwards and forwards. Now, fortunately, the the authors, and by the way, it's the twelfth edition, so this is a book that's kept up to date. Now, there's been probably three additions, three new releases in the last eight years, and I'll talk more about that. But it's not just a book that was published a hundred and fifty years ago and hasn't been updated to match the times. Then the authors of this large tome took mercy on us and created Robert's Rules of Order in brief. Which is a hundred and sixty-page version of just the things that that you need to know to be an effective chair. And I do recommend this book for people who want to chair meetings effectively. Or if you want to be very adroit at participating parliamentarily. Not so much in the small meeting, it's not as crucial, but in large meetings, if you're in large political meetings. You know, these, the level of formality is much higher. And I provided my website a way to get these books through Amazon, just so you can get the right ones now. You probably don't want to read any of these, so I've provided for you a one pager. That was distributed along with the call of the meeting. We're not gonna spend a lot of time going over it, but it's basically. Robert's Rules in in at a glance, it's motions at a glance, things that you might commonly use. In a meeting for accomplishing one purpose or another. Is there anyone who did not receive that handout? Okay. If you need anything about that or have questions, then feel free to interrupt. So let me describe what Robert's Rules of Order is. Now, some people think that a guy named Robert sat down and wrote a bunch of rules, but it's not the case. Robert's Rules of Order was put together like the dictionaries put together. Does anyone know how like the Webster's dictionary is assembled? No, Ryan says no. So the way that Webster's dictionary is assembled is they go around and study how people are actually using words. Then they take that information and compile it into a dictionary. Robert's Rules is the same way. It's a compilation of best practices in meetings. So, for example, I as a professional parliamentarian, I am part of the group that's asked, hey, what's happening at your meetings? What is working well? What's not working? And they study what's happening around the country and then they bring that information together, the authors do. To represent the best practices in meetings. So it really is a helpful handbook of how to make meetings more effective. It has been going on for a hundred and fifty years, but it's constantly being revised and updated. For example, the twelfth edition, which was just released last August. Is a whole new section about electronic meetings and what's the best way to have those. So it's an ongoing collection of best practices. When we look at different types of meetings, meetings have different. Different objectives. So you have meetings that might be solely for the purpose of sharing information. What what would be an example of that kind of a meeting? This is an interactive discussion, so.
I would assume that that would be like a lecture.
There will be, there will be a quiz at the end, yes. Information sharing is, yeah, you go to a class and you just sit there and you absorb information. That's correct. Another one might be idea sharing. What would be a a meeting where you're focused on idea sharing?
Work session.
Yeah, work session, brainstorming, you know, how do we troubleshooting, any anything like that. There are decision-making meetings. What would be an example of a decision-making meeting?
This one.
Precisely, yeah, it's it's a group that, yeah, a council. It could be a family council, a church council, a city council. Any organization whose specific purpose is making decisions. Sometimes it's legislative, sometimes it's administrative. Organizational. What would a an emotional sharing meeting look like?
Would that be like a twelve-step program type of?
Absolutely, it could be a political rally. It could be a church meeting. It could be a funeral. It could be. Though the the really the focus of it is for us to have a cathartic experience together. So the type of meeting, of course, that we're really focused on is decision-making meetings. Decision-making, this is done by a deliberative body. And so Robert's Rules of Order is really only appropriate for a deliberative. Meeting, a deliberate body that's has their business is making decisions. And that is defined as a body that where everyone who's attending has an equal voice. And everyone is attending has an equal vote. Now, with this definition, is a a family meeting? Is that a deliberative body?
Depends on what's being deliberated.
Often it does, often it does. In most family settings. You may have discussion or you you get consensus with your kids, but a lot of times the mom and the papa make the decisions. Is that right? Everybody's everybody's voice isn't the same. What about a meeting at your day job, work meeting? Is that a does that a deliberative body if you're having a staff meeting?
Not really.
Not really, yeah, you're exactly right, Mayor Brew. Is it Barubi?
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir, because, yeah, you may, you don't all have an equal voice. The one who has the greatest voice is the boss. The one who makes the decision is generally the boss. So that is not a deliberative body.
Something like the buck stops here or something.
Exactly, exactly, something like that. So this could be a church council or a whole variety of different kinds of meetings that. Everyone does not have an equal vote. And so those are not deliberative bodies as defined by Robert's Rules. So these rules are really only applicable to people who are organizations who are a deliberative body. Now, let's, we can narrow that down a little bit more because. Government units such as a municipality are required by state law to adopt rules of order. I give you the reference here under in the Utah Code. Now counties are also required to adopt rules of order, charter schools, public schools. And by that, by adopting means you have to adopt rules of order and then, of course, follow them. That's the, you know, a room and normal eye as you've you've gotta say what you're gonna do and then you have to do it. So you would need to check, and I haven't. As I don't know if if anyone there, if Susan has checked to see if you have in your. City Charter or any of your ordinances, if you have adopted Robert's Rules of Order. Okay.
Do we have a city council? We have our own rules of order. It's not exactly Robert rules, but we do follow our own.
Okay, that's fine. If you have written rules of order, then you meet the the requirements of the statute. You just have to publish the rules so that everybody who's attending your meetings knows what to expect, and then you have to follow them. Often, those who adopt their own rules of order, it's usually only a couple pages long. And that doesn't cover all of the things that Robert's Rules covers, you know, because it's obviously it's seven hundred and fifty pages. So you might think about adopting Robert's Rules for that purpose. It's it's much more. It covers a lot more situations that you might not have covered in your existing rules. I haven't seen your rules, so I can't really comment. However, whatever rules you choose to use, and there are other rule books, there's. Obviously, the state legislature, they follow Mason's Manual. The the US House of Representatives, they have their own rules. There's a Benjamin Franklin wrote a book of rules, but it hasn't been updated for quite some time. So there are other books of rules, but. Robert's Rules are used in about eighty percent of private and and government institutions across the United States. Follow Robert's Rules. And for the reasons are that it are, they are kept up to date. And they do cover quite a number of of situations. So once you determine if you are going to use Robert's Rules, then you want to know that in Robert's Rules. There are different rules for for different situations. I'm parliamentarian, for example, for a a large union in California that has a two thousand. People attending a conference. Or a a church in in Colorado with six hundred people, you know, in the meeting. Or a large political convention. So when you have very large meetings like that, you have a certain, another level of formality that you have to observe. Or else you can't get anything done. When you have a small group like what you have, and and Robert's Rules considers this to be twelve people or less. You you can have a little bit less formality because you only want the level of formality that's necessary for you to do your business. What's important to know is that Robert's Rules is to help you have a better meeting, not to make it more complicated. So one of Robert's rules is that you only observe the level of formality that's necessary for you to get your work done. The purpose of the rules. Is is to have the rules serve your organization, not for the organization to serve the rules. So there are a few deviations from the very formal rules that exist in a large meeting, and you probably observed most of these already. One is that as you're sitting around in a group of five and and somebody has a comment, you can just raise your hand. And in fact, a lot of times, we don't even do that, right? So since you have an intimate group and you can see each other's eyes. You can tell like in a conversation when somebody's trying to get the floor and have a turn to speak. And maybe even the mayor would just look at somebody and that would be their indication that it's their turn and. You know, so it's a, it's a very easygoing thing to do. But you might also notice that when there's a very passionate topic and there's contention for the floor. That you may lose control of the environment and people are interrupting each other. And that's a good time for whoever's chairing the meeting to step in and say, well, I can see this is a very passionate topic. Just for the time being, let's observe the more formal rules of being recognized for debate and that way we can, we can control the interruptions. And then the Americans say, okay, now, Phil, why don't you speak or Charlotte, why don't you speak? And then, you know, when you're, when you're back to another topic, then you can say, okay, well, let's, let's, you know, we we will. You don't have to keep raising your hand now, whatever it is, but you can, you can use those more formal rules when it's necessary to keep order in the meeting. In a small group like this, you don't need the second emotion. So the purpose of a second is only to make sure that in a large meeting, we don't waste time talking about something that only one person is interested in. So if if, so since you only have five of you, I mean, already, one person is. Twenty percent of the of the participants, right? So if one person wants to talk about something, you don't have to have it or have a motion, you don't have to second it. Some, some people make a mistake that even in a large meeting. That they're, they're discussing something and then somebody says, wait a minute, nobody seconded that. Well. And once you start the discussion, it's, nobody cares about the second, because the whole purpose of the second is to determine if you want to discuss it. If you're already discussing it. There's no further need for a second. But in a small group like this, motions do not need a second. It doesn't save a lot of time, but it's just something good to keep in mind. In a large meeting, you're limited to, you know, you you get a chance to speak one time. And then you have to wait for everybody else to have a chance. So in a small meeting, we're a bit more flexible. Somebody can speak twice on the same subject. You know, of course, you still want to make sure that everyone has an opportunity to. To get their, get their airtime. In in a group even of five, there's often some people who consume more oxygen. And some people who don't participate as much. Doesn't mean they're less engaged, maybe they're just a little bit more quiet. So it is important to. You know, for especially for the chair to draw people out and give them an opportunity to express. But there isn't a strict limit in how many times you can speak like there is in a large meeting. In a large meeting, for example, Congress, we never have debate without a motion. So we we have to have something on the table in order to even have a discussion. In a small group, sometimes you start talking about a concept or an idea or a problem. And we're sort of brainstorming a little bit and maybe we don't really know where we want to go with it yet. And that's okay in a small group. We do still need to get to emotion at some point. Emotion is how we actually state what our decision will be. It's how we. Put our 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 thoughts as a council into words. But it's okay to have some informal discussion without having a motion first. I'll talk a little bit more about that somewhat later on. And it's also possible to take a vote without a formal motion. I'm sorry, that should say a formal motion. So it could very well be that, you know, we're all talking about, let's say, lunch. And 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 Mayor Barubi says, well, I think, you know, we we should get some pizza in here. Phil says, heck, heck, yeah, that sounds like a great idea. And Susan says, absolutely. And so at at some point, we, it's obvious that the that we're all talking about the same thing. And marriage is, and the marriage is says, well, are we all agreed then that we're gonna have pizza? And everybody says, yes. So in that case, somebody didn't actually state a formal motion, but what, but everybody understands what we're voting on. That's not really a good way of doing it, but it is possible. And the problem is that the secretary has a hard time putting that in the minutes as to what exactly that's about. In a large meeting, you'll notice that, like if you're at a political convention or something, if any of you have participated in something like that, the chair always stands. That rule is waived for a small group. It would be kind of silly if the mayor had to stand up, you know, in front of a meeting of four other people, right? So there's lots of, again, Robert's Rules is a compendium of best practices. It's based upon practical experience of people who are actually trying to make meetings work. In large organizations, the chair doesn't vote or participate. The reason is that in large meetings, the chair's only duty is to make sure that there's a level playing ground for everyone to get their ideas expressed. And and to discuss. And to make sure the rules are followed. But in a small group. You know, the chair is sometimes even the most active person. So the chair can vote, the chair can participate in a small meeting such as you have. Without any of the rules that preclude that. Any questions about anything I've talked about so far?
Wouldn't number seven be based upon the form of government like ours?
Oh, absolutely, yes.
I want to clarify.
Yeah, absolutely. Yeah, yeah, this is, I'm only talking about Robert's Rules. I'm not talking about, you know, if you've got a weak form, you know, weak mayor or strong mayor and. Yeah, there's a county and there's all kinds of different forms of government, but yes. If none of these rules override the law, of course, and so whatever your former government is, that's a very excellent point there. Thank you.
Yeah, I didn't want my excuse taken away.
Yeah, there you go. Okay, fair enough. Alright, so let's talk about the duties of the chair, and these are listed in Robert's Rules. I'm not gonna go in great detail of these. I think mainly they're understood. Excuse me. Of course, the the duty of the of the charge to control, excuse me. Control the floor is needed. So again, if, you know, if the discussion is going along nicely and everybody's playing well, then. You know, you don't have to really jump in and and make it very formal. But if people are interrupting each other and, you know, and, you know, maybe. Going over time or whatever your rules of discussion are. Then it's important to, you know, for the for the chair to take control of the floor. And to assign the floor, which means select, you know, okay, now it's your turn to speak, it's your turn to speak. And also when when we have very passionate discussions and and emotions are going up. You can use that process of assigning the floor as a way of sort of giving people a way to step back for a minute, slow down the pace. You know, sort of maybe bring back the emotions a little bit. So it's a good tool for the chair to be able to use for that. Of course, the chair is responsible to state input votes and announce the result. I'll describe that in just a minute. Those are three different separate steps that need to be done for each vote. The chair makes parliamentary rulings. So sometimes I'm in meetings where. Someone will, I I'm a parliamentarian. I'm I'm there to advise the chair. The someone will stand up and say, could we have a ruling from the parliamentarian on such and such a thing? Well, the parliamentarian is simply an advisor to the chair. If I was to attend one of your meetings, then, you know, my only job would be to advise the chair or take notes and maybe, you know, give suggestions later. The person who's the chair was either elected or appointed or somehow. Determined to give be given the authority to be the chair, and that person has the responsibility for making parliamentary rulings. And not the parliamentarian. So if you're in a meeting with a parliamentarian and and the people are talking about, you know, getting a ruling for the parliamentarian, now you know, that's not how it's done. I know they're talking about that in the Senate, but that's the Senate rules, that's not Robert's Rules. The duty of the chair is to protect the time of the body. And the body is the members, okay, the people who are there. The people who are there have the right to participate. And by the way, when I talk about the members of the body, I'm only talking about, in your case, the council members. So it's a mistake to think that Robert's Rules of Order applies to everybody who shows up at a public meeting, say, for your city council. The people who are members of the assembly, me, members of the voting group, who have that equal voice and equal vote. Those are the members of the body, and everybody else there is a guest. And whether they participate or don't is up to the chair and to the to the body, to the council. So, you know, if you have an open mic night, you know, with your constituency, that's great. You can set the rules for it. None of those people have a right to make a motion or to, you know, engage in debate or, you know, they only have the rights that you. Are the privileges that you extend them as being a guest in the meeting. Of course, the chair, as we know, opens and adjourns meetings, just as we saw the example of, and and is the person responsible to formally. Process the process the meeting. So again, these are all the duties of the chair under Robert's Rules of Order. And I had a mayor that just was newly elected here. In in Utah County, call me and say, this is a quiz, by the way. This is one of those quiz points. Said, I'm having a meeting and I need to know what the what the rules are for. What are the, what are the Robert's Rules for this meeting I'm having? And so what meeting are you having? I said, well, me and a few members of the council are getting together. I guess I and a few members of the council are getting together with some of the legislators in in our who represent our city. And we're trying to share with them our our agenda and things that we would like to take them to the. Take to the to the session. And so now, the question to you is, is that a meeting that is governed by Robert's Rules?
Council members were there.
Oh, yeah, so this would be not enough council members to form a quorum.
I would say no.
No is the right answer, Ryan, because it's not a deliberative body. The purpose is not to deliberate and make decisions. It's just a, in in fact, it's a persuasion meeting, right? It's information, maybe some emotion sharing. I'm not sure what it was, but it was. You know, for the purpose of 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 getting the the legislators on the side of the city. So, yeah, it was not a deliberative meeting, and so I just said, well, you know, you're you're fine. Robert's Rules don't even apply to your meeting. So, you know, do whatever you need to do to accomplish the purpose of your meeting. Now, as we talk about the duties of the chair, we also make the observation that good decisions require well-formed questions. When we make decisions in a meeting such as this, the the decisions are generally binary. Which means we're voting yes or no. We're counting the ayes and the nays, right? So we have to form a question that can be appropriately answered yes or no. So, you know, if we say, okay. Does it snow more in the winter or in the mountains? All in papers, hey, I, right? So you you, that's not an example of a well-formed question. So part of the duty of the chair is to make sure that the questions that we're gonna vote on are well-formed questions. Now, there are some motions that may not be in order, they may not be clear, they may not be complete. And I'm not gonna spend a lot of time on this, because this could be a half an hour discussion right here. But, you know, for example, if if somebody makes a motion that doesn't really make sense or it isn't complete, let's say that someone. Makes a motion that, you know, let's buy, let's buy new chairs for the office. And then the chair may say before stating the motion, just say, well. Who is going to choose the chairs? And then the person would say, oh, yeah, that's a good idea. I motioned that the that we'll we'll buy new office chairs and they'll be selected by Susan. Okay, and did you want to put a limit on the money? Oh, yeah, yeah, that's a good idea. So it's the chair's job to help. To make sure that the motions are in a form that's actionable, right, at the end of the process. And also, I think we find from experience that if in your meetings, and I don't know, but if in your meetings. If you're having frustration as a council member because the meetings are lasting too long, like the meetings are going on and on and on. Generally, this is because you don't get to a motion quick enough. Some people feel like you need to discuss it and figure it out before there's a motion and that. Where and then when we have a motion, we're ready to vote. That's not the case. All we're doing when we have a motion is we're focusing the discussion. We're bringing in, so, you know, we have a problem with, you know, our office furniture, and so we're talking about chairs and sofas and. And, you know, sleeper beds and desks and everything until somebody says. and, you know, sleeper beds and desks and everything until somebody says, well, I moved that we buy new office chairs. Now we've focused the discussion. And now we can talk about just the chairs and people can vote for our, for, uh, up, or they can vote it down. But now we've brought the discussion into a very focused thing. So, um, a, a good chair, uh, will be able to help focus discussion and save the, the, uh, the council time by getting to a motion a little bit sooner rather than letting the discussion go on and on and on. Does that make sense? All right, let's talk about the duties of the secretary. Um, the, the biggest one, there are a bunch of, you know, administrative duties and course notice and keeping track of things. But the biggest one is, uh, the minutes of the meeting. One of the things that I see quite often is, uh, 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 secretaries that write notes instead of minutes. So here's the difference. Um, minutes, uh, 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 are not a transcription of the meeting. They're not trying to capture, here's what this person said, here's what that person said. You probably record your meetings, right? Yeah. And so if somebody wants to hear everything that everybody said, they can simply go to the recordings. You probably make those available on the, uh, internet or, you know, they're publicly available. Um, the purpose of the minutes is not to try and, and record everything that everybody said in the meeting. In fact, that's really a bad idea, which I'll explain in a second. You want to have, of course, the time and the place and the date who attended. Uh, you want to have the motions and decisions. That's the, that's your summary of the things that were decided at the meeting. So if somebody says, now, didn't we decide? It seems like we decided this five months ago. Well, instead of, you don't want to have to go back and listen to five months of recordings. You want to just go back and look at the minutes to be able to quickly identify, you know, here's what was decided. So, uh, minutes only have the motions that are made and the decision on those, uh, motions. And if there's a report, like if you have a report on a specific topic, uh, by a subcommittee or a group, then that information could go in the report. Um, you can summarize that. Uh, what I do is I'm, um, I'm paid by some organizations to be their parliamentarian. I'm also paid by some organizations to be the chair of their meetings and paid by some organizations to be their secretary. And as secretary, I always make sure that, uh, whatever I put in the minutes, uh, for reports, the person who made the report has the opportunity to go correct that and make sure that it correctly summarizes what they said. But not debate. You're not summarizing the debate, the discussion of what's here. Well, Phil Ryan said this, then Phil said this, and that's not the object of the, of the minutes at all. Uh, the reason for that is you can, you, uh, you never get it right. Okay? So, um, you can spend a lot of time, you know, trying to, uh, understand what Phil was talking about and how to write that down. And, uh, maybe, you know, you, maybe you left, you can never, uh, say it, uh, in, uh, exactly the way that, uh, Phil wanted to say it, or include all the things that Phil said. So it doesn't do justice to try and summarize the debate or what the discussion is on a topic. And so, uh, that's actually not required or advised by Robert's rules. Uh, and then you may want to also include, um, action items, which aren't really, uh, you know, there could be assignments. It's more of a, of a tracking thing and doesn't necessarily need to go in the minutes. But, um, I know I, uh, and some organizations where I'm secretary, uh, I, I, I call out the action items or assignments that people were given during the meeting and they find that very helpful. But it's, uh, it's definitely not a transcription of the meeting. Uh, any questions so far? Okay, let's talk about the steps that every deliberative decision must go through. So, um, the first step in Robert's rules for making a decision of the council is you have a motion. Okay. Now, again, there can be some informal discussion about it ahead of time, but really we don't know what we're talking about until there's a motion. A motion is what focuses the mind and what helps us to really talk about this particular thing. It's very important that we all know what the motion is because that's what we're going to vote on. And so, um, uh, if there's a large group, which doesn't apply to you, there's a second to the motion. Um, and by the way, that process that I described earlier of the chair, making sure that the motion is clear and complete, that's called, uh, perfecting the motion. So once the motion is perfected, then somebody will say second or whatever, that's fine. And then the motion is stated by the chair. Now this is a very important step. Even in a small group such as yourself, what we never want to have is anyone saying, what do we vote on? What, what, what are we talking about? What did we just vote on? Um, and Mr. Mayor, with all respect, if that's happening in your meetings, I don't know if it is, but it's directly a reflection of the chairmanship. If you ever, if you ever have that, then, um, it's because of not following these exact steps. So, uh, somebody will stand up and say, well, I moved that we buy a three new chairs, uh, for the office, uh, selected by Susan, not to exceed a thousand dollars. And then the chair determines, yeah, that's a good motion. That includes all the things we need to know about buying the chairs. And so, um, somebody seconds it if he, if there is nobody who seconds it. In, in your group, you don't worry about that. So skip that part. Then you state the motion. Okay. It's been moved that we buy new chairs for the office, uh, to be selected by Susan, not to exceed a thousand dollars. Now, what's very important is that the motion is taken down by the secretary word for word. Because that's the thing that the, that the member moved. Okay? Um, a, a big, um, issue that I see in many organizations is that the chair, uh, doesn't take the care, I'm, Mayor, I'm not saying this is you. Um, doesn't take the care to either write down the motion or ask the secretary, could you please repeat the motion? Somebody needs to have the motion word for word. Maybe it's already on your agenda, word for word. You don't need to worry about it. But even motions like I move that we postpone this to the next meeting. Uh, I move this, I move that. It needs to be, you, it needs to be recorded word for word because that's what you're going to vote on. So when the chair states the motion, that makes it clear, this is what we're now discussing. And that excludes all the, uh, the discussion that's not germane to that topic. It helps us to focus our thoughts. Then we have the discussion if it's allowed. There are some motions which, uh, debate is not permitted. And again, that's a longer discussion. We can cover that sometime when, uh, if you would like additional discussion on it. Well, after the discussion, then the, the chair again will put the question, which is repeating the question. Again, so we've had, uh, the, the chair has stated the motion, then we've had all this discussion and maybe we've forgotten exactly what the motion is word for word, because words mean things. The words of a motion, uh, you know, do you make sense? Differences between may, shall and must, you know, words are exacting and, uh, and words mean things. So the chair will then put the question, and if the chair doesn't remember, and, and the best practice is for chairs to make notes while you're chairing the meeting of exactly what the motions are. And you can't see me, but I'm doing this, uh, uh, under the table. So you, uh, as, as the, uh, the gesticulation of this is the universal sign for make notes, please. If the chair doesn't have it written down or is, is unclear, then the chair should be able to turn to the secretary or to the parliamentarian, if you have one, and say, uh, could you please state the motion? And then the secretary will read out the motion word for word as it was recorded. Now, what you suppose happens in some cases, uh, a person makes the motion. And then the chair, uh, disrespectfully changes or misstates the motion when they state the motion. And then states it in a yet a different way when they put the motion to a vote. And then the people of, of the body vote on it. Which one are they voting on? What would you guess?
The one by the chair.
That's right. They're voting on the one that's put, uh, by the chair before the vote. So, um, it's very important that we state the, the motion as it's, uh, given by the person that's respecting them as a, as a member of the council. And then it's very important that we put the same question, because it, it could be that by miss, by misstating one or two words in the motion, you've changed the motion entirely. And now we're voting on something we didn't even discuss. So, yes, the one that goes in the minutes is the one that's put by the chair. Now, hopefully, um, you have a relationship with your secretary, Mr. Mayor, where the secretary would be comfortable to say, um, no, that, that wasn't the motion. And by the way, it's also very fair for the secretary, uh, if the, if the meeting is going on and a motion is made, um, and, and not stated by the chair clearly, for the secretary to ask, I'm sorry, what was the exact motion? Because it's very important, especially in your business where you're a public agency and, you know, people and, you know, what you do means things to people. It's very important that these things are captured word for word. Does that make sense? So, yeah, the, the secretary should feel free to, um, you know, ask if something isn't clear or whatever, uh, whatever's happening. Then the, the vote is taken. So the chair puts the question to a vote by saying, okay, um, the motion before us is that we will, uh, and I'm not going to say it word for word because I haven't written it down, uh, that we will purchase new chairs for the office to be selected by Susan, not to exceed a thousand dollars. All those in favor say aye, or raise your hand, or whatever is your customary way of voting. Um, those opposed say nay, or raise your hand, whatever is your customary way of voting. And then this is very important. Then the chair must always announce the results of the vote. Again, um, if we get to a point where, uh, somebody says at any time during the meeting, what did we just vote on, or what did we decide, or what happened at that meeting? That is, um, uh, because we failed to observe, uh, the process. And so, um, the, uh, just to make sure that everyone knows what the results of the vote is, the chair will say, okay, well, I, uh, uh, that appears to be a five to one, or do you do roll call, or whatever you do, again, whatever your custom is for the type of vote. Uh, so the ayes have it and I rule that that motion passes or is lost, uh, or, you know, whatever the, the process is. That makes it very clear to not only you, but anyone in your, if you have an audience or anyone, uh, that's participating in the meeting, even by observation, exactly what the decisions are that are made and, uh, and exactly what the results will be of the vote. And then the chair will goes on to the next item on the agenda says, okay, our next item of business is, and that's how we transition to the next item. Uh, any questions on anything I've said?
Mayor?
Yes, Phil. Councilman Swanson.
I, I'd like a, a clarification. I noticed the point of clarification is not in Robert's rules, which is wonderful. And I think some of the larger meetings need to remember that. But say, for instance, with what you were just saying on, um, having a motion and then discussion, so the discussion is focused. On one of our agenda items tonight, it's a, it's a discussion and our action to consider a class B beer license for a local establishment. Would you recommend that we make a motion first and follow that with discussion for and against?
Absolutely. In fact, uh, my recommendation is that your agenda would be application for a class B beer license for so-and-so. Or whatever, you know, whatever information is public there. I don't know. Because the fact that we're going to discuss it and, and vote or not vote is implied, right? That's, that is what we're want, going to make a decision on. We have, we have meetings to make decisions. And so the agenda is what are we going to make a decision on? So yes, make a motion. And, uh, the motion can be to approve it or to not approve it, whatever, you know, whatever you want the motion to be. Then you have your discussion and then you'd have to take a vote. That's exactly the way it should go.
And if the motion were to, if there was a desire to amend the motion or withdraw the motion, those steps could be taken after the discussion, correct?
Absolutely. Yeah. Yeah. And you could get into your discussion and realize, yeah, uh, or, or postpone it. So there's, um, there's several things that you can do with a motion. You can, um, amend it. You can postpone it to a certain meeting in the future. Uh, you can, of course, um, uh, you know, lay it on the table. That's something that's very rarely done, but, uh, uh, and, and it's, and it's com- mostly commonly misused. But, um, yeah, there's several things that you can do to motion, including, you know, voted up or down or, uh, like that. Now you did mention, um, a, uh, a, um, point of, of clarification, you called it? Yes.
I was noticing on the cheat sheet that you gave us, that, uh, at the very bottom, um, point of clarification that you mentioned that that is out of order.
Yeah.
Is, uh, further up, you talk about, uh, getting more information on a matter being discussed.
Yes. Yeah. So a point of clarification doesn't exist. It's, it's one of the 10 most misused, uh, thing. Um, or, or it used to be called in, in Robert's rules, point of information. But people thought that that gave them a special privilege of correcting somebody else. I'm going to give you information. So it was renamed to request for information. And, um, a request for information is you're asking a question. And then it's, the question is directed to the chair, everything, including the debates directed to the chair. And then the chair could answer it or, you know, turn to the, uh, city attorney and say, could you answer that? Or turn to the proposer of the motion and say, can you answer that? Or, or wherever the information is to be found.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Yes, Kirby. Is, so we have tabled things before, but it sounds to me like it's not really, that's not the correct.
That's right.
It's to postpone it, right?
That's right. So here's, here's why you would use lay on the table. And lay on the table is really meant for something that's going to be taken up later in the same meeting. So let's say that you're discussing something and, um, and you say, uh, well, I, where's the budget? Well, I need to see the current budget figures before I can vote on this. And then somebody says, oh, well, uh, um, so-and-so is out making copies of the budget. And we'll have him here in 20 minutes. And you say, well, I moved that we move, we lay this on the table now until we, um, you know, so that we can look at the, uh, look at the budget. And then that's fine. Or maybe the governor walks in your meeting and the, and the, the mayor says, hey, would, would anyone mind if we tabled this so that we can have the mayor address this particular issue? That's the proper use of tabling. But, um, if you want to simply move it to the next agenda, that would be postponed. Postpone to a definite time and that postpones it to the next meeting or on a certain date or a year, you know, uh, it, it should be no more than a quarter away.
All right, Kirby, do you have anything else for us?
Let me just finish the, this, the reason why postponing is different from tabling is that you vote once to table something and then you vote again to take it up from the table. So i- i- if nobody votes to take it up from the table, it dies. Whereas postponing something puts it automatically on the agenda for the next meeting. So, um, I'm very happy to, uh, to answer questions. Um, you can, uh, email me at, um, at myparliamentarian.com. I also have a blog where I take questions and answers, uh, and answer them publicly. But, um, you know, if there's ever a time that, uh, I can help, uh, your, your council with more training or answer, uh, specific questions on Robert's rules. Again, I, I understand you don't, uh, uh, adopt Robert's rules, but I, I recommend that you do just because it's, it's very thorough and covers every situation. And if there's anything I can do to help, um, I'm happy to do it. Thanks for having me.
Thank you, Kirby. Very informative. Appreciate it.
Yes, thank you so much. I learned Robert's rules of order in speech in eighth grade and it's been a while.
Been a while. Yes.
It's only been, that's only been five years, Charlie.
Yeah, exactly.
It's only five years. That's not long. Thanks, Kirby.
Thank you.
Well, we learned a couple of things there. One is that your current chair, uh, isn't doing a very good job. Two, I'm going to have to rewrite the Sylvester's rules of orders, which will probably follow. And three, I appreciate you letting me be a guest in your meetings. It's, it's always a pleasure to be your guest. With that, we will, uh, now hear from Rod Layton. Rod, I believe is the executive director of the Children's Justice Center. Is he with us, John?
Yes. If you can hear me okay?
We can. Rod, thank you for joining us tonight. And, uh, if you'd like to proceed with your presentation, um, we have with us tonight, all five of our council members. Uh, Phil Swanson, who is our, uh, mayor pro tem. Uh, we have Ryan Barker. Ryan is also, uh, the fire marshal in our district, a council member Severing. Council member Dalpas, who's our newest council member. And we also have council member Extrem along with our city recorder and our, uh, city manager and attorney, and I'm assuming some citizens online. So, Rod, why don't you go ahead and introduce yourself and, uh, make your presentation?
So you guys can hear me okay? Susan is there? Um, Patricia? She's, she is also trying to come on. Do you allow her to come on?
I didn't hear what he asked.
He was at, he said someone named Patricia is also trying to join the meeting.
Trying to join the meeting. Um, I don't know if you can add her.
John?
She's been added.
She's, uh, gonna, there she is. Okay. She's on now. Thank you. I share a little bit. So if everybody can hear me okay, I'm going to leave my camera off because my internet works better with my camera off. So if that's a, everybody, if you can't hear, or there's a little technical thing, let me know and, uh, we'll go from there. She'll, she'll, uh, start this a little bit. So as the mayor said, I, um, am from the Children's Justice Center. We are. She'll, she'll start this a little bit. So as the mayor said, I am from the Children's Justice Center. We are located on 408 Van Buren. A couple of the questions that have come up with previous councils that we have presented to, so I'll try to answer upfront, so that maybe we can save some time there. We are not a nonprofit organization. Some people get us confused with that being a nonprofit. We are a county agency. I work for Weaver County. My employees are all Weaver County employees. County attorney is my boss. We do have a nonprofit attached to us. It was created, they created a nonprofit organization to basically maintain the building, to provide training for police.
Hey, Rod, you're cutting out, you're cutting out fairly regularly. Could you get closer to the microphone, or see if that'll work?
Let's see. Oh, yeah, I am cutting out a little bit, Mayor.
Yes, you were. Let's see, getting closer to the microphone.
Any better?
So far. Although we may have lost you. Why don't you proceed, and we'll, we'll see.
Hopefully you can hear me. Sometimes these things work, and sometimes they don't. If it's breaking up too bad, we can switch to Patricia, and she could present it. Would that be Mayor, better Mayor?
We can hear you now, Rod, so whatever works for you.
Patricia, are you on?
Yeah, Rod, I'm on. Can everyone hear me okay?
Yes, I can. Counsel, can you hear?
Yes, much.
Okay, maybe I'll present, Rod.
Yeah, why don't you go ahead and present the, you're, you're the ones that made the youth public can present. The mayor knows quite a bit about this, so go ahead and try.
Okay, I'm going to apologize in advance. My dog is a little whiny, so I'm sorry in advance. But as Rod said, we're from the Children's Justice Center. Basically, what we're here to talk to you about and answer questions is just about an ARPA request that we're asking you guys. Basically, what Rod was trying to say in the beginning, before he started cutting out, is that a lot of the times we get confused as a nonprofit, so we just wanted to just kind of correct that before we get started. We are not a nonprofit agency. We are Weaver County employees, so Chris Allred is our boss. Well, Rod's my boss, but Chris is Rod's boss, boss. And so we are Weaver County. We are in a government facilitated agency, but we do have a nonprofit attached to our center. Basically, that nonprofit, they're called the Friends of the Weaver Morgan. And they help just pay for like, the bills that help run the CJC on a day-to-day task. So we just wanted to clarify that, just so you were aware, because I think a lot of people think we're nonprofit, and we are not. We actually help prosecution and law enforcement. So we're a community partner for law enforcement and DCFS. So just kind of going into it, a lot of people know what the CJC is. Basically, we help facilitate investigations. And with that, we also provide services for families who are victims of child abuse. So anytime a kid discusses or discloses any type of abuse reported to law enforcement agencies, or to DCFS, or schools, or whatever. Basically, we interview them at our center, and we help that family get services, which are anywhere from mental health counseling to medicals, et cetera, et cetera. So that's kind of what we do, is we provide interviews for prosecution. So if they go to court, the prosecution has a video disc of the CJC interview, so that they can kind of see what charges can apply. And law enforcement have those discs as well, just so they can try to see what charges are, well, really for their investigations, along with DCFS. So if you guys have any questions about that, we can kind of talk about that later. But why we're here today is just to go over the CJC, and basically just ask, so the CJC throughout the years has gotten an increase in cases. And you can kind of see on this chart, from 2008 to 2021, and we went from 500 to 800 in the last couple of years. With that, the severity of the cases are getting more egregious, and just a lot worse overall. I am a victim advocate, kind of, basically, that's what I'll summarize it as. So I'm the person who meets with families directly, and I can tell you firsthand that not only are we exhausted from resources, like, we don't have any space at our, at our current facility to help these families as much as we could, if we kind of just had a different building. That's why we're here today, is kind of just to talk about the building. The CJC, we have been in that building, and Rod can correct me, but for a very long, long time. And we have used it to the best of our capabilities, but it is no longer fitting our center, nor is it fitting the citizens of Weaver County. We can only schedule two interviews at the same time, because we only have two interview rooms, one. But also, due to COVID and all these other issues, there's just too much, there's not enough space for families. So we are trying to get a new building in the works. Rod and I have been working on this for a couple of years. And basically, kind of, we're doing this over Zoom, sorry. So basically, we've been going and trying to find land, trying to find a building. We've gone through the process throughout the year. And we finally found a piece of property on 19th and Jackson, and it's kind of next to the Botanical Gardens. I believe the Ogden School District, and they're leasing the land to us for a dollar, like, for 50 years, or 99 years, or something. A dollar a year. And now we're trying to get the funding to build the new building. So we can be a fully functioning facility and deliver our services to the county. So why we're here today is just to kind of look at the increase, as well as kind of talk about ARPA, and see what help we can get from the city in Weaver County for the funding. We, in this chart, and it's a little confusing, so I'll kind of explain it. You can see there's a pie chart here. 22% of these cases of child abuse are Weaver County. The rest are Pearsill, South Ogden, Roy, Riverdale, right? Of the 22%, that other chart on the right-hand side, it says 2021 Weaver County cases. Those are cases within the county specifically. So a lot of your cities, a lot of these cities, I guess, contract as Weaver County through the sheriff's office, so that's what that chart is. So you guys can kind of ignore that, because I'm pretty sure North Ogden's its own city. So we're looking at North Ogden, the 5.2%, that little orange slice. And you can kind of see the colors change, sorry, but on the 2020 cases, it's that bottom chart. Where's North Ogden? Okay, North Ogden is 7.6. So in 2021, you were at 5.2. In 2020, you were at 7.6. In 2019, you guys were at 6.2. So you're kind of like averaging around that 6-ish, right? So here is a kind of little chart that we had one of our office managers make. For North Ogden, we're asking you guys from your cases, so you're, so we have 33, 47, and 39 in the last three years. We're averaging that total to about like 39.6. And that's kind of how we're summarizing our ask, so I don't know why, but I'm covering it, but, so we're asking North Ogden for 94,000, almost 95, basically, to help fund and build the new CJC. This is a one-time ask, and we're trying to get this through ARPA funding specifically, because we don't want to burden the citizens of Weaver County with increase in tax and all that jazz. We'd rather just get ARPA funding, which has been given through the federal ask. And I sort of got Rod as way better at this than me, so I'm sorry, but he's also on, so I'm sure if you guys have questions. But that's what we're here to talk to, hear you guys about today, is just, we need to build this new building. We're asking all of the cities in Weaver County to help build this building. Weaver County has agreed to a million dollars contingent on all of the other cities participating. So on this, the two last columns, it says percentage of 1.5 million, million, and percentage of 2.5 million. This is what we were asking to begin with, was the 2.5 million, but because Weaver County has donated a million dollars, we're only asking for a million and a half from the rest of the cities. So you only really need to see the second, or the very first column. But it does, it's interesting to look at, because with the help of Weaver County, they, since they donated as much as they did, were, our ask for all the other cities has decreased. So, I mean, that's my summary of it, as quick as I can. Do you guys have questions? And Rod, if you want to add anything, go for it, if you're not breaking out.
Well, Patricia, thank you. Very good presentation. Rod, what would you like to, to add? We must have lost Rod, or he's muted.
Oh, yeah, he's gone. Well, I can answer any questions you guys may have. I know there may be a lot, so.
Councilmember Swanson and myself were at the meeting when Rod presented this to WACOG. Just some additional information. Is I had a chance to talk with Chief Quinney. Chief Quinney is a real believer. I think the statement he made was, without the CJC, we wouldn't be able to solve many of the cases that we have. I would suggest that the number of cases that are reported are only a fraction of actually what's taking place. And we like to believe this isn't taking place in our city in North Ogden. In the spirit of full disclosure, my wife sits on a group, I think it's called Staffing, and they talk about cases in Weaver County that has law enforcement. My wife represents the mental health aspect of this. And I think each one of us would be surprised if we knew what was going on in our city. I think CJC does an excellent job. I believe that if they had the facilities and they had the resources, and the word got out that they could help these young people, I think their case management would probably increase substantially. So Councilman Swanson, I don't know if you have anything to add. I know in the WACOG meeting, one of the things that I was very concerned about is solving these cases and putting the perpetrator off the street is important. But even more important is the fact that we stop this cycle. I think statistics would show that those who are abused, when they're younger, become abusers as they get older. So Councilman Swanson, you were at the meeting when we had the discussion at WACOG. Would you like to add anything?
Thanks, Mayor. My, my first gut reaction was concern that the county was turning to this being a county department, and not just something that's, you know, loosely associated. That the county is turning to the cities to fund something that the county ought to fund. But then I had to take a step back as we started looking at the statistics. And Mayor, as you mentioned, understanding that the live statistics we have is but a fraction of what's actually happening out there, and knowing the steps that we're taking in North Ogden with our new public safety building, because of the difference that a, the layout of a building, the modernness of a building, the difference between soft interview and hard interview rooms, those kinds of things will make for our police department. I'm in favor of finding the money, however we can, to support the CJC. I've talked to others throughout the community who are involved from a legal aspect with CJC. And they can't understate or overstate, my brain's still in COVID fog. There aren't words to sufficiently describe what CJC does for our community and for those that are needing their services. So I'm in favor of, of doing what we can to fund them.
Mayor, I think I'm back on. Can you hear me now?
We can, Rod. Go ahead.
I'm so, so sorry about that. I have terrible internet, but thank you for the things that's been said already, and, and Mayor, I appreciate, appreciated it when you spoke up at WACOG and, and added some things there. One, one thing that we're, we want the cities to know is we've been in business now for 30 years. And we have not come to any cities in those 30 years for additional funding to keep the CJC going. We anticipate if we can get this building built, and we can, everything falls into place, we won't be coming back. That, that's the great value of having the nonprofit onboard with us, is they'll take over the building, they'll do the maintenance, they'll pay the bills. The program will still be under the, under the county, but the rest of it will not be a burden on taxpayers. They will take care of it from, we hope, for the next 50 years. So it's, it's an incredible opportunity to have cases seen at the CJC where they're professionally done. They're prepared for court. And, and I tell you, right now, there's a lot of defense attorneys going after the interview type, the mental health side of things. And if you haven't got that right, it's just going to be a disaster, so. The CJC has learned all the, all the things we need to know, and we're going to get better. And, and we're going to even improve on some of those things, especially in the mental health side of things. So I don't know if there's other questions on that, but I appreciate the things that have been said already. Your, your detectives, by the way, we absolutely love North Ogden. Your detectives have been great partners. I don't think they've ever tried to do a case outside of the CJC. And so they've probably been one of our top law enforcement agencies to use the center and do it correctly, so kudos to them, for sure.
Thank you, Rod. Just to clarify, my understanding is the city, the county's million dollars is contingent upon all the cities participating to some degree.
That's correct.
The other understanding I have is there may be a private donor that's willing to step in and help if they see the interest of the cities.
That's also correct. Everything's kind of like contingent on, on the other. And the reason the private donors are waiting to see what we get is they're hesitant to put money into, into a project until they know the project is funded and going to go forward. And that's very common in capital campaigns, if they're a little hesitant to donate. So if we, and why this is so critical to us, and why we're going, going after the ARPA money so strongly is is if we could get two and a half million from ARPA through Weaver County, and then all the cities, we can then sell our building, which is worth 1.2 million. Then with our private donors, we will be over 4 million, little over 4 million in what we've raised. And if you look at that, ARPA is going to be, we're going to match what ARPA does. So when I went to the county early on, they said, if you can find, if you can match what we can get from ARPA, then, then we're onboard. That's how we sold it to the commissioners. And so we would be at a little over 4 million, and then we have a contractor that said, if you guys will do all you can, and then come and talk to me, then we could start, we, you know, we'll take a look at this. So with ARPA money, we're, there's a possibility we could start digging as soon as August. Without ARPA, we're going to be late into 2023. It, that, that's about where we're at.
I believe the county has opined that this does qualify for the use of ARPA funds. Is that correct, Rod?
Yes, that's correct. And we will, I've already talked with our county attorney's office. The county attorney's office will, will create a Will create a, um, a document that will be provided to you, to the cities. That will outline how this, how this is used, where it was used. And so all of that will be done by Weaver County and given. And submitted back to North Ogden. So it's, it's kind of like a memorandum of understanding, but it's, it will. We will make sure that you're covered, that the ARPA funding was used for what it was, for its intended purpose. So that will be provided.
Counsel, do you have any questions for Patricia or Rod?
I just had a quick question. Have you picked out a site? Have you got plans? Everything is all kind of just. Just waiting for funding. Is that kind of the position that you're at? I'm sorry, I lost my connection there for a minute, so you probably addressed that already.
No, actually we haven't. So thank you for asking that. We've, Patricia mentioned, we've been working on this for the last two and a half years. So we've entered into a, a partnership with the Ogden School District. Um, there's a piece of land, uh, at, at, uh, seventeen and Jack, nineteenth and Jackson Avenue. So it's right next to the soccer field and the football field where the Ogden City School District campus is. Uh, one of the great advantages of that is the two acres. Um, we've had it, we've been to Ogden City, that has been zoned, rezoned. Um, for this project. All the survey work has been done. The survey, um, the soil samples have all been taken and they've all passed. Uh, so we've done a lot of work up to this point. Um, and as soon as we can get the funding, then we literally do have a site. It's a beautiful site. It's perfect for what we need and it's taken us two years to find it. So we're, we're glad to have that. That saves us, um, that property will be leased. Instead of purchased, that will save us a, a million and a half dollars if we can just enter into a ninety-nine year lease with the school district. So we're saving a lot of money by not just outright purchasing and it, it won't hinder the project at all to do it that way.
I'm just to add, we did get conceptual drawings or we are currently right now with an architect. So that is already being started.
Yep.
What is the timing, Rod, for the, uh, the cities to make the commitment?
Well, Mayor, we're hoping that we have commitments by the end of February or middle of March somewhere. At least let us know if they're. If they're going to do it or not. I mean, as we, some have already committed, some have just said. You know, we're good to go. The county will be involved with that as far as collecting the funds and getting it into a building account. So we're, we're pleased that the county is going to help us with all that as well. So as the sooner we know, the better. And then. The, the county is, has offered a lot of, a lot of help as far as bringing those funds in and getting them in where they need to go and then managing them for us. Our, our nonprofit is not capable of doing a project this big. And so, uh, Weaver County is going to help us with all that. So. I guess the, the answer that Mayor is, is if we knew as soon as possible, then we could move on to. You know, some other projects and, and move forward.
Okay. Counsel, any other questions while we have Rod and Patricia with us?
I have a quick question.
Uh, go ahead, Councilman Dalpass.
Um, my question for Rod is, are we pretty confident in the numbers that you're asking for from each city? Uh, so our share that would be asked for, is that a number that you feel pretty confident across all the cities? I understand that there's a level of commitment that would have to happen from all of them, but I just wanted to get an understanding if you felt pretty good about those numbers.
Yeah, and Patricia explained a little bit of how we come up with those and that was just based on the percentage of, of usage from each city. So when we plug that in with our, with our formula, then it, you know, that's how we come up with the ninety-four thousand for North Ogden. You know, the smaller tiny little cities are, you know, or anywhere from seventy-five hundred dollars up to Ogden City. That will be seven hundred thousand dollars. So that's how that formula worked and we. So with all the cities participating, then we'll be at the one point five million. And that, that's how that formula worked. Your city is, you're about fourth in, in the usage. Um, uh, you know, pretty consistently every year. And you guys are very aware of. That you've had some pretty dynamic, high-profile cases in North Ogden over the years. And so. Um, you know, that's where the value comes in is, is having the CJC take, take that over. And, and making sure that we're a resource to cover all those. So. If everybody were to jump in, pay and pay the, the amount we're asking for, then we'd be at the one point five. Is that the question you had? Is that, answer that?
That's great. Thank you.
Rod, what we'll do is we have some planning sessions coming up. Uh, we appreciate the information. We appreciate the statistics and the data. We have no doubt the great work you and your team do. And so we're very appreciative of that. So we will discuss this in a, an upcoming planning session. And we will get back to you, uh, as soon as possible. So, thank you very much.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, council members. We, we do appreciate your consideration on this and will. We'll, we'll make this a really, really nice center, a standout center really, and, uh, one that Weaver County will be proud to have.
I might just add, uh, Councilman Swanson, correct me if I'm wrong. The question was asked is why don't they just take these kids that are abused to the police stations and interview them? Well, they have found that. Kids are already afraid of what's happened and oftentimes they take on the blame like. You know, what did I do wrong? And so they found is when they used to do this, the kids kind of clammed up and. And it wasn't a good atmosphere for them and they found great success in this. I think they almost referred to it as a home like grandma's.
That's correct.
They feel very comfortable and, you know, they can talk openly and. So in case that was on someone's mind, that was, that question was asked and that's how it was answered. So.
And I'll just add, I wouldn't, I wouldn't recommend it ever, but obviously it comes across everyone's mind. But like imagine being five or six years old and you're going into a room with someone with a gun on their hip. Like it's a lot more frightening than I think a lot of us realize. And it's just so important, like so important. We don't scare these kids. Especially when you bring other cultures into this, into this environment, like people are already scared of the cops and some don't believe them or whatever the case may be. Having this has really, um, constructed a great environment with our community. And building that relationship with law enforcement so that they can build that relationship of trust. Which right now is so important. So that's another reason why.
Thanks for your comments, Patricia. Any other questions before we excuse Rod and Patricia?
I do.
Let's go with Councilmember Swanson there first since he.
I just wanted to add to your comment about the, the atmosphere. Um, I was impressed when Rod mentioned at the WACOG meeting that this building will be architecturally more like a home. Than an office building or a municipal building, that it will have that exterior look. Of like you said, grandma's house, so that it's warm and inviting from the exterior as well as from the interior.
And that's correct. Actually, there's been a lot of research done on this and everything matters. Everything from when they pull into the parking lot, that it's quiet, it's private. From the colors of the room when you walk in to what they see, how they feel. And so tons of research has gone in and we're taking all that research. Some have asked us, why don't we retrofit a building? Why don't we just find an older building and just go in and make some office space and, and retrofit? That's exactly why we can't do that because we, we've got to start from the parking lot all the way through. Until they leave, everything has to be consistent with what a child, what makes a child comfortable, like Patricia was saying. So it's, it's a lot of thought that goes into a. It was interesting when I met with the architects, when we met with them, the first thing we did is we went over without giving private information. We went over about four or five cases with them and said, this is the case. This is what we see. This is what happens. And instantly he, he was. He, he had, he was, he was passionate about the project. And he said. I'm glad you told me what the work is like because now I can put that into my head as I design the building. So I thought that was a great statement when he said, I needed to know that part. So it, it does go together.
Councilmember Ekstrom, did you have a question?
Yes, it was really right along those lines. I would love to see. The architectural design and then the thought process. When we were designing the public safety building, well, say we. I mean, I'm looking at it. Our, our policemen, of course, had lots of input about just even the flow, right? That you're, as, as you flow through the building, where do you come in? Where do you go next? And I'd be very interested in seeing that and the process going through for your building. I would just really love to educate myself about kind of. That, that would kind of give me a better idea about. Um, what you do and the benefit that it is. And I, you know, I have complete faith of, of what you do. It's. But I, I, again, it's just more, I, I would be interested in just educating myself a little bit more about your process. You know, just, um, it, just to appreciate it even more. So if, if that is something that you could send to me in an email or something. That would be, I, I would love to receive that.
And counsel, I would say this too. Some have asked if they can go see the current facility and how it works to get kind of a feel. That would be by appointment only because the facility is so small. And these kids come in and there's all these people around. So if you'd like to do that, if you would call Patricia or Rod. And set up an appointment if you're interested in, in gaining more knowledge as we make this decision. But it's very important that you make an appointment, uh, for the proper time. So.
One of the other things, Mayor, like she said, one of the things we're going to try to do as soon as we get to a point where we have a conceptual drawing. And we have something that we can show, we're gonna, we're gonna drop those off to the city councils. And just, you know, set them on an easel somewhere so you can kind of get a vision of what we're thinking about. So we want to keep the cities involved. We're, we're, we don't want to just take the money and not, you know, not have you part of that. So as we progress, we're gonna. We're gonna bring stuff to the cities and we, we won't be presenting obviously to the councils, but we will leave, you know, material and a, and a. A, a, a shot of what the building will look like. And we want, we want all of you to be involved with that as much as we can.
Hey, thank you. We'll let you go ahead and enjoy the rest of your evening.
Okay. Thank you for letting us present.
Oh, no problem.
Thanks, Rod.
Okay, let's proceed with our agenda this evening. Uh, with our consent agenda. Before we enter into our. You've had a chance to look at the agenda this evening. Does anyone have a conflict of interest they'd like to disclose at this point in time? Regarding any of the items we'll be discussing tonight. I don't see any, so we'll move on with our agenda to item number four. Counsel, I'd be looking for a motion to approve the November thirtieth, twenty twenty-one city council meetings. So moved, we will continue on with our seconds. Do we have a second?
Second.
All right. Any discussion on the minutes? Any corrections?
Mayor, I just have a couple of corrections.
Okay, go ahead, K D.
On page six of the November thirtieth meetings, um, there is a spelling on. It's the sixth bullet, sixth bullet down. I believe it's supposed to say utilized instead of utilizing. So you guys can take a look at that. And then the other one is. On section eight, on page eight, um, I believe that it should say than progress. Instead of that process.
Okay, Susan, do you have those?
Yeah, I will get them changed.
All right. With those changes.
Excuse me, who, who did you decide made the motion? I heard Swanson was the second. Who was your first?
Councilmember Ekstrom.
Okay, thank you.
All right, there's a motion to approve the minutes. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Are there any opposed? Okay, we'll move on to item number five. Which is a discussion or action to consider a class A retail beer license. Counsel, I'm looking for a motion to. Present the, to approve licenses as listed here, Smith's Marketplace, Walgreens, Lee's Marketplace. Seven-Eleven and Maverick. Do we have a motion to approve those? Councilmember Severing?
I was just gonna say, I move that we approve the class A retail beer licenses for Smith's, Walgreens. Lee's Marketplace, Seven-Eleven and Maverick.
Can we have a motion? Do we have a second?
Second.
Have a, a second by Councilmember Swanson. This time we'll have discussion, which it would include anything, John, you'd like to present.
No, uh, I just was here, council had questions on the difference between the two or anything about that.
Counsel, do you have any questions for John?
Would like him to explain the difference between the class A and class B. I don't know the difference between those two.
Okay, Councilmember Ekstrom.
Yeah, class A is pretty much prepackaged. You know, it's, it's bottles and cans. Uh, class B is cakes or other distribution methods. Um, I believe there's even a class C, which would be your whole bar. I guess you'd know this more than I do, Mayor, because you've worked with the ABC, but. That the Hug Hess has the class B license because they use, um, they have their beer bread. And so they have cakes delivered and, and need that class B license to have those cakes of beer delivered.
John, the state passed a law, I think it was a couple of years ago, that requires fairly extensive training. For those who have either a class A or class B beer license. Is our approval based upon? Any of that or do we just rely on the state?
Um, we just rely on the state, uh, to make sure that they're keeping up their certifications. They do have to recertify. Um, and they submit that paperwork to us before we bring it to the council.
All right, thank you. Counselors, are any further discussion? We have a motion and we have a second to approve. Class A beer, retail beer licenses for Smith's Marketplace, Walgreens, Lee's Marketplace, Seven-Eleven and Maverick. All in favor of that motion, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? We'll now have, uh, enter into a item number six, which is a action to consider a class B beer license. Uh, for Hug Hess. So counsel, I would be looking for a motion. To approve a class B beer license for Hug Hess Cafe. Do we have a motion? Have a motion by Councilmember Dalpass?
Yeah, Mayor, I motioned that we approve the, uh, class B beer license for Hug Hess Cafe.
Okay, do we have a second?
I second that.
Second by Councilmember Severing. Do we have any discussion or questions? Seeing none then, I would look for approval to grant that class B beer license to Hug Hess. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Are, are there any opposed? Thank you. We'll now enter into our active agenda and we'll start this evening with public comments. Uh, just as a reminder, if you would limit your comments to three minutes. And John will be watching. If you could raise your hand, uh, John will inform us and we will call on you for comments. So John, would you please let us know if you have, if we have any of the public who'd like to comment this evening?
Uh, sure. There are no raised hands yet.
Okay, we'll wait just a moment.
Still nothing.
All right, then we will proceed to item number eight on our agenda. Uh, counsel, as you're aware. Commissioner Arner has decided not to re-up for her term as a planning commissioner. Commissioner Arner has decided not to re-up for her term as a planning commissioner. So we had an opening. We sought applications for that seat on the planning commission. We had five applications. We went through a, basically a two-step process. We asked Eric Thomas, the chairperson of our planning commission, Councilmember Dowpass, who has an assignment to be a liaison with the planning commission. And also Scott Hess, our planning director, to do the initial interviews. They came back and recommended the two candidates, uh, to proceed to a further interview. Those two candidates were interviewed by John Call and myself. Uh, I think we had very good thorough interviews and I would say that all of the candidates were very qualified. Um, as I've said, uh, before, as Ronald Reagan said, trust and verify. So we did receive a recommendation from the initial group. We did verify that through our initial interviews. And tonight I'd like to present the name of Cody Watson to fill the vacancy on our planning commission. So I would be looking for a motion to approve that appointment. Do we have a motion?
Mayor, I move that we approve Cody Watson as a member of our planning commission.
All right, we have a motion to approve Cody Watson as a member of our planning commission. Do we have a second?
I second that, Mayor.
Seconded by Councilmember Severing. Counselors, any discussion or questions? I don't see any, so I would call for a vote on the motion, which is to appoint Cody Watson to our planning commission. All in favor, say aye.
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 Are there any opposed? I will now move on to item number nine. I believe that we'll be looking for a postponement on that item to a future council, uh, meeting. Do we have a motion to postpone that to an upcoming council meeting? Did you move that, Councilmember Swanson?
I was gonna let Ryan do it.
I was gonna let you do it.
Okay, well, we'll say we have a first and a second there. Any discussion on postponing that to a future meeting? All in favor, say aye. All right, thank you very much. Motion passes unanimously. We'll now move on to item number 10. This is, uh, our discussion to consider an ordinance regarding an emergency operation plan. I believe we have with us this evening Casey Hunzaker, our emergency manager, to give us some insight on that. So what I'd be looking for before we have Cody, uh, uh, enter into discussion on that, this would be ordinance 2022 dash oh three. This would be a motion to approve that ordinance regarding the emergency operation plan that will be presented to us here by Casey Hunzaker. Do we have a motion? Counsel?
Mayor, I'll move that we approve ordinance 2022 dash zero three.
Thank you, we have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second with Councilmember Ekstrom. At this time, I would ask Casey to give the council insight before we take a vote. Casey?
Good evening, Mayor and Counsel. So I've recently taken on the role as the city emergency manager. Um, in, in that role, I've, I began to go through all of our emergency management files that we had from our previous emergency manager. I discovered that our emergency operation plan was out of date. Um, so I started, I began to update it with current employees that, that needed to be staffed in the emergency operations center or the E O C. As I did so, I, I discovered that our order of succession in case of an emergency was, would go to the mayor and then to the mayor pro temp, and that's where it ended. Um, we need to have it go at least to a third degree. So I've asked John to, uh, make up the ordinance to uh, change that, extend that order of succession. So it would go from the mayor in, in the event that the mayor was unable to be present, it would go to the mayor pro temp. And then the event that the mayor pro temp was, was unavailable, then it would move on to the most senior member of the city council based on their years of service. And after that, if that, that member of the city council is unavailable, it would move on to the city manager or administrator. It's very important that we have this succession so we know where the authority is coming from in the case of an emergency. So we have the guidance. Right, like I said, right now in our, our ordinance or in our city code, it's only outlined to the A and B degrees, so we need to go further to the C and D degrees.
Okay, thank you, Casey. Just so that's clarified, so that would be the mayor, then Councilmember Swanson is the current mayor pro temp, but he's also the senior council member. So if he or I were unavailable, that would, that would go to Councilmember Severing.
Correct. And then it would go to the next, I believe it'd go, it would go to, I, I don't know, John, would it go through the senior of the council and then to the city manager or?
That was the intent, was to have it go through all members of the council based by seniority. And then, then my position be the, the last. So basically, there's like, my position would be number seven on the list, not number four.
And that's good clarification. Casey, do you have anything else for us during our discussion time?
Um, no, so, so I do have those that emergency operation plan updated. It, it lists our critical facilities. So I did not include it in the packet tonight. I will, I'll send it out to the council um, in an email later, as well as, and that also lists those who will be in the emergency operations center. John and I are considering training, um, more training for those who will be in the emergency operations center so that we're aware, um, but I'll detail that more in the email as well.
I think that would be good, uh, for the council to receive additional training, what the expectation would be for their involvement in the event of an emergency.
Yeah, absolutely. And I, I know that there's a need to train our employees as well um, across the, across the city. As well as, um, John and I have also talked about training multiple people to be able to step into roles if certain people aren't available in the event of an emergency.
So Casey, where would be our current emergency operating center? I know we're planning one in the new public.
So currently, it is, it's located in the police station in their training room. That's where all of our, our books are. Um, currently, we're split into two really. We have half of, half of the emergency operations center, which would be the policy group and command staff is located typically in the the police station. And then the operations and logistics would be located in the council chambers and city hall. Once the new public safety building is built, we plan to have it all located within the emergency operations center, within the public safety building, instead of having it separated. So there's less confusion.
Perfect, perfect. Any other questions of Casey, counsel?
Yes, Mayor, I have a, I have a question.
Go ahead, Councilmember Severing.
Uh, first off, Casey, thank you for taking this assignment. Uh, I'm not sure, but this is kind of weighed on my mind a little bit as a city councilman. Um, will your information also include what kind of, um, inventory we have for emergency supplies? And if not, could we, could we make sure that we have some kind of inventory about what we do have?
So, Councilman, Councilman Severing, so I don't currently have an inventory. I will, I'm making a note right now of, uh, to remind myself to make that inventory. So I can, I know we have some things located in the storage in the police department. I'm not, I'm not sure what we have over there. I, that's, uh, I was kind of throwing into this. I'm, I'm trying to, to get myself above the water personally.
Understandable.
As well as helping the city. Um, like I said, it was very outdated. And, and I'm just trying to get us back to being up to date. But I will, I will get that inventory and as soon as I do, I can send that out to the council as well.
Okay, and then as you evaluate the inventory, then maybe would you also, and again, Casey, this doesn't have to be done immediately, but um, because obviously, as you've mentioned, you're kind of swimming. Um, maybe make recommendations about what needs to be purchased in order for the city to be more prepared. So I would appreciate that. So thank you for, thank you for your service there.
Yes, Casey, thank you.
Happy to do it.
Thank you very much. I think one of the things we need to make sure is I think each religious section of our city has their own plan. And I think it needs to be made clear that in the event of an emergency, that is under the direction of the city. Because otherwise, we could get total chaos. Uh, so I hope as we develop the plan, Casey, and I know that's going to take some effort and some time, that we have adequate coordination so that we don't have, you know, ult- ultimate chaos with everybody kind of doing their own thing. So a lot of work to be done there and we appreciate you taking on this assignment.
I, I agree completely on that. And I, I've got Lori Frazier in the, the office manager for the police department. She is helping me, um, get contact information for all the stakes in North Ogden, so we can coordinate that as well in case of an emergency.
Yeah, and any other religious organization that may want to be involved too, but
Yeah.
I, I, you know, I think we have some good volunteerism in the city to help in the event, but sometimes uh, good deeds end up, uh, causing problems. So as we go along there, and I would echo Councilman Severing's comments in our recent survey of priorities, that was added and it's rated very high, I think, by the citizens that we are prepared for the event of an emergency. So I know the county has a good plan that we probably coordinate with also, so. Any further questions before we go for a voice, a voice, I mean, a roll call vote? Does that use Councilmember Swanson?
It is.
Go ahead.
On, uh, number C, most senior member of city council, would that be more clear if we eliminated the most senior and just had it say member of city council and then parenthetically, um, in descending order based on years of service?
That's more definitive. Uh, I guess that's a good thing on, on, uh, definition of most senior, because otherwise you'd always be the first call. Go ahead, Councilmember Dowpass.
I was just going to say, every once in a while, you will have two city councilmen that are fresh elected together. And so you will potentially have a conflict on that order. So there could be some wording in there that says, you know, tie goes to, of those two that have the same level of years of service, you know, the one that is older in age will be the first and then younger is second. So I think that could potentially happen. I don't think it's very likely, but in an emergency, it would probably be good to have it very clear.
Mayor, I hate to, I hate to muddy the water. But in my mind, even though I understand the idea of a hierarchy, quite honestly, Councilman Barker is probably the one that's the, uh, um, I, I would put, I would put Councilman Barker ahead of me if there were ever really legitimate need and neither yourself nor, uh, Councilman Swanson was available. So I'm kind of deferring to Ryan. Though I don't think there's ever going to be a third position, uh, necessity here.
I was hoping to stay out of this with the top two.
Well, I've not had any kind of experience with, uh,
Why don't?
I would be a follower, not a leader on this one.
Yeah, why could we do something like this? So why couldn't the mayor make a recommendation to the council of, of the order? Because, you know, otherwise it could be same age, we could get into this. But we probably ought to have a council member that's a liaison to this. And that way we could get all clarification. So maybe we could just change C to say uh, additional member as identified by the, suggested by the mayor and approved by the council. For instance, what I'm talking about here, if we had a emergency today, uh, first call would be to me, second call would be to Phil, and third call would be to the liaison who's appointed for emergency, uh, preparedness, so to speak. And then we could list the others, uh, as elections take place. Does, does that make any sense? And if we get down to the number four or five, we're probably in deep trouble.
I can hear that one. I think we're looking for skills here. Not every, not every city council is going to have a Ryan Barker. Uh, but I just think he's got some skills there that would make this, you know, an obvious choice.
Well, I think that's why it would allow the recommendation of the mayor and approval of the council to, uh, to do that. And in our case, it probably would be Councilmember Barker. But if he's not here, it, it, uh, it does give some leeway. So what's your preference?
Mayor?
Councilmember Swanson?
I'm wondering if we are in the type of emergency that you're gone, I'm gone, and we're looking for the next person. Councilmember Barker, would you not be pretty heavily in, uh, involved through the fire district?
That's what I was gonna mention is I'm already get, yeah, you probably don't want me. I'll be working regardless. It'd be the same as, uh, yeah, you probably want somebody else.
Mayor, if I, if I may. Uh, so looking at our emergency operation line, which I'll, I'll send out to you guys, um, either tonight or, or tomorrow. So it, it lays out the, uh, policy group and the command staff, and then the planning group and the operations group. And Councilman Barker is where, his position is a fire marshal. He is, he is one of the members of the operation group. So he will be, he would be part of the E O C, um, the boots on the ground, so to speak, to help those, those operations. So it, it may make more sense to have it be another member of the council, like Ryan said.
If, if that's the case, Mayor, and I'm more than happy. I don't think there'll ever be a situation where it would get to see. But if that's the case, I would volunteer to be the liaison to work with Casey, uh, on this emergency management program.
Well, could we just change that then to make it for future mayors that the, the mayor would appoint the succession after A and B? And then we could appoint a council member to be the liaison, and then we would appoint uh, other than specifically naming someone in this, uh, this ordinance.
Hey, hey, Mayor?
Yes, sir, Councilmember Barker.
Um, my, my recommendation is to leave it as worded as is. And once we go through some trainings with Casey, we'll understand how everybody's role fits in a little better. And then we can make better determination. But I think it's pretty good the way it's worded, because uh, going through these trainings, everybody kind of knows their role. And so it'd make a lot more sense after we've been trained.
Based upon, based upon that, we do have a motion and a second out there unless there's any amendments. There's no further question. I would, uh, ask that we proceed with a roll call vote to approve, uh, ordinance 2022 dash three regarding, regarding the emergency operation plan.
And Mayor, is that for the original ordinance that was in the packet?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
Just making sure.
Yes. So it would be a, a motion to approve the ordinance as presented and, uh, motioned and seconded. Okay, we'll go to a roll call vote on that. Councilmember Swanson?
Yes.
Councilmember Ekstrom?
Yes.
Councilmember Barker? Councilmember Barker.
Yes.
Councilmember Severing.
Yes.
Let's see, who have I forgot? Councilmember Dalpas.
Yes.
Okay, ma, motion passes unanimously. We'll move on now to item number eleven. This is a action to consider an agreement with Jeff and Podner Randall to defer completion of required sidewalks. I I'm going to go ahead and ask Scott to make his presentation initially before we seek a motion here, just so we can have information. So Scott?
Sir, thank you, Mayor and Council. So we have our standard sidewalk deferral here. John helped put together. This is for a two lot subdivision. Well, it's a one lot newly created subdivision and a remainder lot on the corner of seventeen hundred and Fruitland Drive, received final plat approval on October twenty-ninth, twenty twenty-one. And as part of the subdivision request initially, the applicant had asked if they could defer the sidewalk in order to preserve some existing old growth trees that provide privacy for a portion of the new lot and the remainder of the old existing lot. So we went through the final plat approval. We've begun processing their items moving forward, but the Randall family would like to explore with the council the option of a deferral of this sidewalk. The deferral doesn't have a future date identified in it. It's simply at a time when requested by the city, a minimum of five foot wide sidewalk, the length of the property as indicated in bullet point number, item number one. With this one, you know, staff, staff doesn't have a strong recommendation. We, we do think that in this particular case, there isn't a connecting sidewalk on the east and the west. There's a gap to the west and a gap to the east. And so at a time that the city was prepared to, you know, install the additional sidewalk improvements, we could call this agreement to term at that point. And these do run with the land. So this doesn't impact just the existing family and property owner, but rather would run with the land for all future successive property owners.
Okay, thank you, Scott.
Thanks.
John, I'm going to ask you to kind of voice your, your thoughts on this to the council before we seek a motion.
Um, so I, my, my, what I'm going to say is basically what the council said. It was probably four or five years ago, and that was they, they weren't going to do deferral agreements anymore for sidewalks. Because it just kicks the can down the road and causes issues. I think that that is true, and I think that that will likely happen again in this scenario and others where, you know, if, if the city doesn't decide to do it for twenty years and, and the Randalls have sold their home, then now that the obligation's fallen on the hands of someone who didn't see it in the title report. And it just, it just ends up being problematic, in my opinion.
Okay, thank you. Scott, do you have anything else to add? Or Council, do you have anything?
I don't have anything to add, but Jeff Randall is an attendee on the call if there's any questions for the property owner.
Council, would you like to hear from the applicant of deferral, or would you just like to proceed with a motion?
An idea. I don't know if it's, we could kind of bat this around a little bit. If that's okay. You know, we had talked about having kind of special districts, like when we, we decide to designate an area where it's like, okay, this, this now needs to have sidewalk, right? And we say, okay, we're going to have sidewalk put in right there and, and maybe there's, there's a trigger of some particular number of lots. You know, it's like, okay, well, we have to have at least, you know, a block's worth, or we have to have three houses worth or three lots worth. Could we ask those that are petitioning like the Randalls to maybe pay into a specific fund that then the city keeps? So that then, you know, wherever we decide to put it, then we have some funds for the city to actually put sidewalks in, in wherever we decide. It's like, okay, sidewalks need to go there. So it's kind of like they're, they're making the contribution, but maybe it isn't such a big impact, you know, to them, like the Randalls would have to take down all those trees, and it would just be this one section of sidewalk. But maybe they could contribute to where we really need to have sidewalks. You know, where we would have the same kind of situation, but not, but, but it would be continuous. Am I making sense? Does that make any sense?
And I think we understand what you're saying. I guess the thought that came into my mind is, you know, sidewalks five years ago were probably half of what they cost today. So, you know, when you do that, what amount do you have them contribute? Because if they contribute today's value, then the city has that responsibility later on. The city gets stuck with all the increase in labor and cement costs, but surely an option. Councilmember Ekstrom. Any other questions? Would you like to hear from the applicant? I don't know. I think Scott's indicated the reason for wanting to defer, which is basically the trees. I see no.
Mayor.
Councilmember Severing.
Thank you. I, you know, I can, I can understand why some of these homeowners are concerned about these kinds of issues. But, you know, we've had, this is the second discussion just of recent time talking about deferring. And again, I, I feel for individuals who have to put that extra money out. But we just keep, we keep, we use the term kick the can. We're just continuing to keep this precedent going. Where does it stop?
I think that was what John kind of indicated was his concern. So good comment.
Mayor.
Uh, yes, Councilmember Dalpas.
If I, if I had to say, it truly does seem like the exception on this one is that there are, you know, these large growth pine trees that are in the way of the potential sidewalk. So I mean, that's been weighing on me quite a bit as I was thinking, thinking about voting on this one. I mean, it's, it's hard to think that because we're so hard and fast that we want to make sure that it doesn't get kicked down the road, that we allow this one to, you know, that we require the sidewalk, because in my mind, it's, it's almost like going out of your way to cut down the trees because we're so worried that we're going to forget it down the road. And, yeah, so I could kind of go either way, but that's kind of where my mind is thinking right now. I I would almost in a way lean towards an exception.
Hey, thank you, Councilmember Dalpas. I guess the thought that comes to my mind is ultimately the trees have to come down. So who's going to make that decision when the trees come down? Because that's the only way the sidewalk can get in. So it's really one of those now or later. It's not that we can save the trees. So I, I understand that I had the same thoughts, but then my mind went to then ultimately the trees are going to have to come down. And I don't know when we would define that to be. If it's with the rest of the development or special district or what. So I, I understand your comments there. Any other comments before?
Mayor.
Yes, Councilmember Swanson.
When we voted on this five years ago, the biggest concern that we had is our city is filled with streets and areas where sidewalk deferrals have been given over decades. One house at a time, two houses at a time, a house here, a house there. We have entire streets without sidewalks because of the habit of deferring for lack of a, a connection to save a tree, whatever. And we felt that that was was problematic throughout the city for kids getting to school and things like that. And we felt at the time that the best thing to do is to just adopt a, a no exemption policy. And I don't see that that is changing. The need for a no exemption policy has changed and has not changed in my mind.
Okay, you were, you were there and had the wisdom on why, why that was done. So thank you for sharing that with us. Council, would you like to hear from the applicant before we proceed with the motion? I'm not seeing anyone.
I would like to hear from.
Okay, Councilmember Barker, let's, let's hear from the applicant for a moment. You could just take a couple of seconds and help us understand your point of view on that. So John, can you? The Randalls are with us. Can you let them speak at this point in time?
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, my name's Jeff Randall. Uh, Council, I appreciate the discussion. We would just, we simply want to build a house. It's kind of in a rural area, and we're willing to take down the trees and whatever is necessary when the time comes. We were hoping we could just leave those up. The the lot is a hundred, about a hundred and ninety feet wide. And we'd even be willing to put up a sidewalk along where we build the house on the west side. If we could, the, the trees are more on the east side. If we could leave those trees up on the east side, that would really be appreciated. And I, I think if some of you probably have seen the lot we're talking about, but it's not like in the middle of a development where there's sidewalks and you know, and all that. There's not a sidewalk on either side of the the lot. So we were just hoping we could get a deferral agreement on that.
Okay, thank you. Jeff, we appreciate that. Well, Council, we've heard from our planning director, we've heard from our city administrator, and we've heard from the applicant. This point in time, I would seek a motion.
Pass it. It's not gonna.
The motion would be, as listed on the agenda, to defer completion of the required sidewalks. So a yes vote would allow the deferral, a no vote would prohibit the deferral. Do we have a motion regarding item number eleven on our agenda? Which is to enter into an agreement number A oh two dash twenty twenty-two, which would be an agreement to defer the sidewalk on the requisite property. Do we have a motion?
Hey, Mayor.
Councilmember Barker.
Can I ask a question before we make the motion?
Yes, sir. Even though it's not in accordance with Robert's Rules of Order, I'll go ahead and let you.
Well, this kind of affects my thought process. Councilman Swanson said that there's a ordinance in place that does not allow deferral agreements in our city. Is that? Did the, did the council pass that? Because if they did, then this, I don't see how this is we could even make this motion if we already have an ordinance in place prohibiting that.
Kind of moot if, for, if there's an ordinance.
John, do we, do we have an ordinance that prohibits it?
No, it was just a, a policy that the, the council said. They, in fact, they said, we don't want to write a specific ordinance because there might be situations that come up, but as a general rule, they just wanted it to be known that they don't grant deferral agreements.
Hey, well, I guess it's the opportunity for this council to speak now, some five years later. So, so that's your question, Councilmember Barker.
Yep.
Ordinance.
Can I make a motion then?
Yes, sir.
I'd make a motion. We approve this deferral agreement since nothing's been in place, and I actually think this is a situation where it does make sense.
Okay, we have a motion to approve agreement A zero two dash twenty twenty-two as on our agenda. Is there a second to approve the motion?
I second that.
We have a second. Is there any further discussion? As a reminder, a yes vote allows the deferral, a no vote prohibits the deferral. Councilmember Swanson.
No.
Councilmember Severing.
Oh, Mayor Neil, I just think in my mind, I, I, I just there's this, there's a part of me, sorry, I just need to say this. There's a part of me that wants to vote yes because I'm convinced knowing where the Randall property is, there's going to be a sidewalk for a hundred and ninety feet, and it's going to probably be the only sidewalk there for years and years and years. And so it'll look kind of silly. And yet, on the other hand, we've got to somehow go a different direction. So the practical side of me says yes. And the other side of me says in another fifteen years, another city council is going to be debating this issue again.
So is your vote yes or no?
Come back to me after, after Councilwoman Ekstrom. How's that?
Well, I don't know, Councilmember Severing, because at that point in time, your vote may become mute. And I'd like you to vote based upon what you feel. Sorry.
My gut says that that cert, that sidewalk is just going to look so out of place. And that I wish we weren't, having had this can kick down the road this many times. But I'm going to say yes on this one.
Hey, thank you. Councilmember Ekstrom.
Yes.
Councilmember Dalpas.
Yes.
Councilmember Barker.
Yes.
Council, uh, motion passes on a four to one vote. I would just say that as a council, we have to be very careful about setting precedent. There are going to be legitimate reasons in the mind of each property owner. And I think it's very dangerous, even though I understand this whole situation. But I think that, you know, it's very dangerous when we start setting these precedents because it's hard to say no to anyone. And so I just hope that as a council, you understand that situation. In this case, it's the trees, and in another case, it'll be someone else. But I do respect you're right on the decision, but I think sometimes this creates a very dangerous situation going forward. Because I'm not sure we defined exactly why we made the decision not to defer this other than it's trees, and we don't know when the additional sidewalk's going in. So I would just say maybe in the future, we ought to better define that. Because when the next deferral comes, and John made this very clear, that we get four, five, or six of these a year. So anyway, let's move on to the next item on our agenda. This is a discussion or action regarding the future land mat, use map. Uh, this has been put in our packet by Scott Hess, our planning director. Uh, so according to our parliamentary procedure that we just received, the first thing we would do is if there is someone who'd like to make a motion as on item number twelve. The other option is, I think, was not a delay. What was it?
Postponement.
A postponement if you feel you need more information. If not, I would look for a motion to approve the future land use map as presented by Scott Hess, our planning director.
Mayor, I would move that we postpone decision on the future land use map for the purpose of gaining a clear definition of certain areas within the map that I, I think are still quite nebulous. Residential low density, medium density. What exactly do those terms mean? We see that they mean very different things in Augen than they do in Plain City or West Haven or other, even in our own communities. Uh, here in Pleasant View, I think we need to better define what those mean so that it's not as subjective when we, when we identify those areas.
I believe also the state is in the process of changing zoning authority, I believe, by cities, which could make some of the decision mute. So we do have a motion by Councilmember Swanson to postpone this based to, based upon obtaining additional definitions and information. obtaining additional definitions and information. Do we have a motion, a second to Councilmember Swanson's motion?
I second that.
We have a section, a second, excuse me, by Councilmember Severing. Council, do you have any further discussion or questions? Uh, for Mr. Hess.
Mayor.
I do at some point.
Okay, Councilmember Swanson, go ahead.
I, I would ask our planning director, Scott, to come back to us. I, I know that in the planning world, at least I understand in the planning world, I can't say I know. Um, that there are universally accepted definitions of what residential low density, medium density, high density, what that means uh, more specifically, rather than a city to city, um, not in my backyard definition. It'd be helpful if we had that and we could come up with what we're, how we're going to define those things. And then see what the state does and whether they preempt this from us completely.
Okay, can, thank you, Councilmember Swanson. Councilmember Dowpas, you.
Yeah, just a couple of questions. One of them is for Scott. So, um, on the civic zones, I, I see that the civic zones are both, you know, district property. And I also see that there are some churches that are, uh, part of those, uh, civic zones. Uh, I, I know that there are many more, whether they're LDS chapels or Baptist churches or whatever religion it might be. There are quite a few civic zone sections that could be added to the map as well. So that's just one point for Scott, and I could help him point out all of the different places where I can think of. And then I would like for Scott possibly to give us some more clarity. I know that this was discussed a little bit at length is this transition zone of one A. I'm trying to wrap my mind around it. And, uh, also if that has any relation to the, uh, RCC zone that was just up for consideration in the planning commission, where they were basically saying, uh, it was up that they were going to allow um, uh, not ADUs, but, uh, basically dual resident prob, I don't know, I don't know how to say it, but there, there was something that was just up for vote there. So I've won, wondered if Scott could talk to that as well.
Yep, I'm happy to. And thank you, Mayor and Council for this. I actually in preparation for this meeting, um, have a few slides that talked about neighborhood commercial. And then I have some definitions for uh, low, medium, and high density. If you're interested in seeing those and, and talking through any of those bits and pieces. Um, first, just to, uh, address Councilmember Swanson's comment, I would say that, um, if you go out to the National American Planning Association, there's maybe some definitions that have been accepted generally on what these mean. And, and there's something that's called the land use transect. I can share that with you, but it's basically a a, a scale from very rural all the way to what we would consider extremely urban and those land uses as they break down. Um, but in reality, zoning is, it's a local issue. And so I think that what we consider low, medium, and high density is inherently unique, and it should be unique, and we should always consider that, that um, because otherwise, everything in the city on a national scale, or even if you start to include our more urban areas of uh, Salt Lake City or Provo as it's emerging, everything will be low density. Even, even our, you know, our maybe village of prominence point averaging twenty units per acre might be medium. But when you start to compare that to, um, double, double-digit story, high-rise buildings and multiples of them on, you know, square acres in downtown Salt Lake. You're just never going to compete. You're never going to get into anything that's considered high. So I think that it should always be considered in the context of the community. That's super important. Um, and we can look at what, what my preliminary review of those definitions in talking to the planning department look like for the city. Um, to Councilmember Dowpass's comments, I just looked at the permitted uses and if I've included, uh, on any church building of any different denomination in the civic zone, I don't know that that should be. The permitted uses are cemeteries, civic buildings, civic complexes, public parks and recreation grounds, public utility substations, water reservoirs, um, or those things developed by a public agency. So I don't actually think that that's churches, and I believe um, that the state has preempted city zoning codes from uh, disallowing a church in any zones. And that's why they end up in, in zones across your city all over. Um, so that's just one clarification. And then the other is on, um, the one B section. Or sorry, one A. That's a mixed zone. That's just on the, on the north side of the residential city center. It's a it's partially R one eight and R one eight A G agriculture. And the thinking from the General Plan Advisory Committee and staff is that in that one particular area, there's a cross-section of uses that would um, justify in some, you know, in, in our opinion or in staff's opinion, two family dwellings, um, side-by-side twin homes or two-family dwellings in that particular location. So what that would end up being is a zoning overlay bounded by a s- very specific description of where it was as a permitted use within those other two zoning designations. And it does relate to the conversation the planning commission had on whether or not we should allow two-family dwellings back into RCC, uh, residential city center, which was previously in approved use. And the initial recommendation from planning commission was to not do that, to retain RCC as a single-family zone and allow our accessory dwelling unit standards to, um, to stay and, and allow that. So that will be coming forward to the council for your policy consideration on whether or not RCC zone should have two-family dwellings. And then we will, um, if that's ultimately supported, I'll bring an ordinance back through planning commission, and you'll see an ordinance to that effect at the council.
Thank you, Scott. Um, you know, it would seem like to me that we need to have a work session to work with Scott on these definitions so that when we we come back, we know kind of a sensation, can have that discussion with the public uh, versus, uh, this evening. Also, the thing I would add is we need to have a discussion on the MPC zone. You know, that is a zone that's, uh, been ordinance in our community. Frankly, my opinion is that has been used basically to get high density, not for its intended purpose. Its intended purpose, if you go back and look at it, is much different than what's happening. And the most recent two that have been granted substantially different than the original intent. I think there needs to be, have a discussion whether we're going to grandfather those zones and take that zone out of our uh, land use. Because at this point in time, I think it just is one that's being used to accomplish high density, not its intended purpose. So we do have a motion, Council, to postpone this. Um, if there are not any further discussion, I would, uh, seek a, um, a roll call vote on this.
Um. Mayor.
Yes, Councilmember Severing.
Um, I would like to see in the spirit of what Kirby taught us. It would be nice to have this on the agenda as, as quickly as possible, so.
Yeah, I think he said within the next quarter. So I believe we have a, a upcoming um, work session.
In, in February?
I believe so. Um, if not, we can shortly schedule one. Because I do believe that this needs to be addressed. But I would refer back to Councilmember Swanson's comment. You know, how much local authority will be uh, uh, taken out of local control? There seems to be a movement, uh, by the legislature to reduce local control on many issues. Um, I will be discussing this with, uh, uh, Representative Walstrom on Friday. Um, he is one of the ones that is sponsoring this bill. I would like to get his perspective on this, but there is movement as mentioned by Councilmember Swanson to limit zoning. Um, and to what degree, I'm not sure. But I know the, one of the genesis of it was some cities in an attempt to reduce, uh, ADUs in their city, start talking about charging outrageous fees, et cetera, et cetera, just to prevent that. And I think the legislature is um, one that's saying, hey, uh, we, we, we've got to come to some consensus here, but we don't know what that is.
Mayor.
Yes, Councilmember Swanson.
I'd like to amend my motion.
Okay.
Like to amend my motion to include uh, having a discussion only about the definitions and such with our planner uh, in February, and then having this for a discussion and or action item our second meeting in March. That will give us, uh, that will be after the legislative session is over. And we'll know what does or does not happen during the session regarding local land use authority. I'll add that in my conversations with, uh, Representative Waldrep and some others that are sponsoring this legislation, their view is clearly not from a, a, a community-centric viewpoint, Scott, as you mentioned, uh, that these ordinances ought to be. What they're seeing is that Salt Lake City, Provo, Ogden, the larger metropolis areas that are right now, the primary residents of higher-density housing are, um, pretty strongly lobbying that they shouldn't be having to bear all the burden. And, uh, it's not falling on deaf ears. In fact, it's falling on quite proactive ears. And so I think one way or another, we as smaller, more rural communities, while we do everything we can to preserve our rural roots, um, are going to have to understand that we're either going to have to help out with the housing crisis in the crunch, or it's going to get forced down our throats.
Thank you for your comments.
Mayor, can I make another comment?
Well, we have a motion on the floor right now. And as, uh, then we'll take some comments, trying to follow our training a little bit. So following that, um, Susan, I would ask you, uh, to recite that word for word, the motion that, uh, Councilmember Swanson just made.
I'm pretty close.
Close only counts in horseshoes and dancing, they say.
Yep.
But I believe, uh, I, I'll try to restate that motion. Councilmember Swanson has made a motion to postpone the approval of the land use map. And in that motion, he has asked that we have a work session to specifically address the definition as, uh, referenced by Scott, so that we can come to some agreement on that. And then put on the agenda for the second meeting in March, uh, uh, action item to approve the map based upon what we find out from the legislature. Does that summarize your motion, uh, Councilmember Swanson?
It does. Thank you.
All right, uh, Susan, I'm sure you got that word for word. And then we'll look for a second on this motion.
Second.
Second by Councilmember Ekstrom. Now, Councilmember Severing, did you have another question, comment? For further discussion?
This is actually, uh, usually I, I'm not as familiar with what's happening on this zoning. I mean, the legislator grants us enabling acts, or they just trying to withdraw enabling acts? Is that, is that what is happening here?
Phil, do you want to answer that question?
Uh, Councilmember Severing, ultimately what it looks like the and I say looks like because you never know until the legislature actually passes, thing in the language is fixed. But there, there is a strong movement within the legislature to remove um, land use authority from the municipalities as a whole. Uh, in other words, we would have no say in what gets built where uh, within our city. It ostensibly comes from the power of the lobby from builders who, um, I, I think part of it because of the community to community effect on zoning. You know, for us, low density is R one ten, R, R twelve five. You go to other communities within our own county and anything below an acre is high density. And it's because of that, that the legislature is responding to the the complaints from the building industry and also the pretty extreme affordable housing shortage that we have to take that authority away or to put such pressure on us that we can't really say no to much of anything.
So that's your question, the Councilmember Severing?
Well, so wouldn't we be better off to make a decision prior to the end of February?
No, because their, their legislation will override whatever we do.
Right.
And you know, it's, it's really interesting, uh, I'm not saying I'm the, the best economics student in the world, but apparently we have a housing shortage of about forty-six thousand units. So what we do is we keep incentivizing businesses to come into our unit, community to create more demand versus supply. And we all know that when demand exceeds supply, it results in basically price increases. So I'm anxious to find out what the definition of affordable housing is. Uh, because, um, you know, somebody that's twenty-eight, thirty years old, unless they've, uh, got a very good paying job, there's no way that they can afford a house almost anywhere in our county right now. So I think Councilmember Swanson has a good point. For those of you who don't know, not to prolong the conversation, but the legislature also passed uh, a law prohibiting the mayor, any mayor from, uh, executing an emergency health order. Uh, I'm not sure that, I understand it fully, but you know, there's more emergency health orders that would apply to a local community other than a mask mandate. I mean, as we all know, if there was a water issue and sewer couldn't be used, it becomes a health issue. So I think it's evident that the legislature is willing to, uh, retract local authority. Um, seems like the legislature is, uh, has some interest in being fair and equitable. But I, you know, my understanding, this is being led by the Utah League of Cities and Towns. Um, so we'll, we'll see how good they represent the rural communities going forward. So with that.
Well, can I just ask then that when Scott makes this presentation and during the workshop, that if Scott could, uh, present what some of the local Plain City, Pleasant View, et cetera, et cetera, what they consider the definitions of each of, uh, of those, those concepts of low, medium, and high density? If you could do that for Scott, that would be really awesome.
Hmm. That'd be good. Like we say, it may become irrelevant, uh, with those definitions.
I know, Mayor, I understand what you're trying to say, but I'd just like to have an idea.
Yeah, they may be set by the legislature, and it might give us some ammunition to have discussion as a small rural uh, community. So we can go ahead and get that.
Thank you.
All right, all in favor of Councilmember Swanson's motion, please say aye.
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 Are there any opposed? All right, thank you, Scott, and thanks to the General Plan, uh, Committee uh, for the work they've done, and, and we'll eventually get there. So I appreciate the work. All right, uh, we'll move on then to, I believe, item number thirteen on our agenda this evening. And this is regarding a, uh, a method to change the way we we look at council meeting minutes. Uh, those of you had a chance to look through the packet, I think Susan did a good job of explaining Exhibit A, Exhibit B, and Exhibit C. So once again, uh, going back to our training, uh, I'd be, uh, looking for a motion uh, regarding city council meeting minutes based upon the information Susan prepared to us. A, B, or C. Obviously, the motion could be amended as we allow Susan to give us further information. Do we have a motion? Would you prefer to hear from Susan first before we make a motion? Since, you know, uh, you've already identified that the the guest here is, uh, not followed procedure. So Susan, it looks like the council would like to have some additional information and recommendation from you prior to making a motion. So go ahead, Susan.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mayor. Um, the mayor and I have had several conversations about this and I, um, it took me some time to kind of put together. Some different options and kind of where we've got, where we've come from to where we're kind of moving. I believe with the minutes and still staying in line with state code and being the most transparent and efficient for our city. So, um, and that kind of ties into, um, having the parliamentary in Kirby here, it kind of, um. He indicated at a training I was at that there should be no level of interpretation put into minutes. And it seems that we've done, we've been doing that as, um. Our transcribers, as you know, I don't, I don't do the minutes, we send them to a transcriber and they've been asked for years to do basically a level of verbatim. But it's, it's not, it's still an interpretation of he said and she, he said, she said type discussions and so. I gave you the, the option eight, so you could see kind of what we had done. We went from thirty pages. Option B, after some discussion with the mayor and the transcriptionist to about fifteen. And then when I went to the Exhibit C, I kind of just made it more of, um. A shell, a shell look of it so that you can kind of see. What I'm trying to do is like, so you understand the packets there, so you've already been given a lot of the information. Like in my staff report, you can see what's happened. And so. If you're in favor of, of Option C, or at least considering it, I'm proposing we consider a higher quality video, video streaming service. That will actually, um, allow us to timestamp things and also to, um, capture. Our packets and things. I'll have John go into, um, Eagle Mountain City is using something like this that I think would really. Help us and this would also stay within the code. We'd do more of a limited minutes. Do you have that, John?
I'm pulling it up right now.
Thank you.
Well, he's pulling that up, Susan, um. The council can see here, we're basically paying two hundred and fifteen dollars a meeting. For city council, one hundred and seventy-five for planning commission. And then the others at twenty-five dollars an hour for transcription time.
And, and I'm not saying we eliminate their services completely as. Um, we still would need some help with some of the transcription, but it would limit that definitely.
So probably would be economically offset if we went to Option C, would that be a fair assumption?
I believe so, and is, as you can see here, what John's showing, um. What happens is we now would own the video versus when we post it to YouTube, we have no rights to it. We have no control over, let's say, what, uh, what commercial is posted with it. This is, this goes right here and when it's a live meeting, people would actually join here where it says video. Um, in the green, it would actually say live, like a live meeting if it like in progress, like that planning commission where you could jump on and help. And actually see what's going on right there. And John, if you go into one of the videos of the council meetings, the video part, yeah. Cause I, I mean, I think the mayor shared before that not many people actually read our. Our minutes, and so this way, if I go in through the video. There's a timestamp of what, like, say I'm looking for something specific, I go through this timestamp.
Well, I, I just would add as we, as John gets this up and going. This is no way to limit transparency.
No.
In fact, I think this can increase transparency. Because the way that our minutes are right now, by the time you get through that. You know, I forgot what the first, uh, discussion was about. So this is no way to limit transparency. I think this. Option could actually maybe increase transparency. But John, go ahead.
Maybe it's not gonna quite work like we want it to.
So, uh, I mean, you can see that the video will change, it's hard to see, but as you click on these. It just jumps to that point in the meeting and you can't hear the audio because I'm not playing it.
Could you share that part, John, or will it, will it let you share the part where you're actually in it?
The, what do you mean, the part where you're actually in it?
In the video where you can see. The video and the trap and the timestamp. Okay, there we go.
You can like click. And it'll jump to a new. Portion of the video, it just takes a second to load.
So, I mean, this is just to give you an idea of what I've been researching is to, and then it essentially it. It gets it to where if I click on an item, then it takes me also to where I can see the staff report. As well as just like if I want it, like their, their meetings are six hours, seven hours, because they do a work session before. So, thank goodness, we don't have those, but. But just so that you can get in here and you're like, I just want to see what happened on the board liaison report. I click on one of those and then it jumps me to where I could see if there's a staff report attached and I can just listen to that portion of it. I feel like that, that to me is more transparent than people are getting what, what they are after. And so that's kind of, um. What, where I'm leaning towards, where the recorders office to me should start going.
We know the cost of the, uh, increased video capacity, what, what would that be, Susan?
So if we could use, we actually have a camera in our council room now that we weren't able to use with Zoom. But because we kind of eliminate the Zoom portion of it, they, because they, they handle all of it, they believe we could probably use what we have. And so then it's around, I have it right here. So the initial cost is, the upfront cost is five thousand three hundred and then the, um, the yearly subscription is five thousand three hundred. So I, I mean, I believe that if we kind of offset that to where I, I mean, I wouldn't eliminate having some. Um, some help still on transcriptionist, because I, I don't believe Joyce and I could still absorb some of that being part-time. But I believe that we could offset it to where we're not spending that much more than we've already been spending, but yet get a different level of, um, transparency.
Thank you. Anything else, Susan?
Um, th- there is one thing that I did think of that when, um. Kirby was speaking to us that we do have our council rules and pitch procedures that we would need to make adjustments to. Um, if we change the way we do minutes, it would have to come back at another time.
Okay, thank you. Counsel, do you have any questions? Further questions for Susan?
I like this approach. I mean, if, if it's gonna work like I am envisioning. I think it's a lot better for, say, a resident to come in if they have. Uh, an interest in a particular agenda item that they can go and actually see what happened. I think we've had residents go back and try and interpret what happened in a meeting from the minutes. And it's just, it's really impossible to, to really understand what happened. Because if you don't have, even if you have a verbatim. Transcription of what people say, there is so much that, that happens even non-verbally that you just, you, you can't even get a sense of, right?
And there's another thing I should add, sorry to cut you off, is that there's like an OCR option where it's kind of like. The optimal character recognition where you can actually type. Say I'm looking for anything on parking and it will bring up everything related to parking based on. It finds it itself. So if I don't know what I'm looking for, what meeting I'm looking for, I actually can go through anything that's been. Posted through here and. Whether it's on ours or planning and they can actually find everything related to what topic they're looking for. So it's kind of a next level as well.
Okay, Susan, just one question. Knowing that not every citizen may have access to automation and. Computer, uh, is there a way they could come into the city if they had a question and they wanted to see? Uh, the minutes that we could provide that opportunity for them?
We would still have the, um, what we're doing now where we offer an audio and we have, you know, more of the limited minutes. And if somebody wanted to, to come in and we could help them find it, absolutely. I mean, it's kind of like a grammar request, I guess, almost where we would be happy to help them.
I'm just kind of looking at their council room. It looks like they could afford to do this kind of software. Any questions for Susan, Counsel? All right, I think you've heard, uh, Susan's recommendation. Uh, she would prefer Option C. I know that, uh, the company I used to work for went through this and in discussion with our attorney. Um, you know, he indicated that you should concentrate on the substance of the ma- the meeting, not all the conversation. Um, I think this probably would provide the option for those who would just. To get the information. And, you know, they could see the full discussion if they would so desire. So do we have a motion, uh, based upon our city recorder's recommendation?
Mayor, I think that we go with Susan's recommendation for Option C regarding, uh, council meeting minutes.
Okay, we have a motion to go with recommendation C. As presented in your packet by Recorder Susan Nance. We have a second, we have a second by Councilmember Severing. Do we have any further questions or discussion? Okay, Susan, if you could, uh, repeat that motion, uh, word for word, we'll, uh, we'll go ahead and see if we can take some action.
We'll go with Option C.
Okay, good, good regurgitation of the motion. All those in favor of the motion, please say aye. Any opposed? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Uh, Susan, thank you for your effort and your work on that. I know it's. You've done thorough research on that and I appreciate the discussions we've had and for the conclusion, thank you. We'll now have, uh, Councilmember Reports. Uh, we'll start with Councilmember Barker, uh. Councilmember Barker, do you have anything, uh, you'd like to report on parks and recreation?
Yep, um. So the most important one, our swimming pool is getting ready to open up here in the spring. We need a lot of lifeguards. So if we can get the word out that they're hiring fifteen and older. And we need all the help we can get. So let's see if we can help recruit some. Lifeguards to come help out the pool. Um, second, uh, we're gonna be having a discussion next week with Sarah Lansing in the Park and Trails Committee on the survey that they did. So that's something to look forward to and the polar plunge got delayed until a future date.
Thank you, Councilmember Barker, for that succinct report. Anything else?
Nope, that's it.
Okay, we'll go to Councilmember Dowpas, Building, Planning and Senior Center.
Yeah, thank you.
We'll let you off the senior center report tonight, Councilmember Dowpas.
Yes, just found out about that one, so I will definitely have a report at some point.
I figured you'd have that. I told you this afternoon about two o'clock and.
No, my bad, I'm so sorry.
As good as you are, I figured you'd have it down, but let's go with, uh, building and planning.
Yeah, so a few updates. So first of all, uh, I've been working with Scott, so I have a weekly meeting with him just so we stay up to date on anything that's happening. Um, one thing that he mentioned to me is that we're getting close on our Title eleven and twelve zoning code changes that are coming. That's basically where, uh, the zoning and building code is going to be reorganized and put into a. Manner, and so expect to see that over the next couple of months, hopefully. And then just a point of interest that everyone will probably want to know is that. Um, Scott Hess has actually been asked to be a liaison with the American Planning Association. Um, to basically update the state planners on code changes that are coming down from the legislative session. So just be aware that, uh, Scott is going to be well involved in that, and I think that that's a huge benefit to our city because he's going to be. One hundred percent in the loop as things happen up there, so just wanted to mention that. And then, uh, had a. Business in North Ogden reach out to me, I wanted to mention this to the city council because I feel like it's pretty important. Um, so Tate Seacrest and Richard Waynesguard, they recently went through an approval process in the planning commission. To do, uh, an addition on the Waynesguard building for the dental office. And then also, uh, within that plan of what they're trying to do, they're trying to connect their parking lots. That, uh, improves access to their businesses. Uh, one of the requirements that came. Did someone say something? Okay, uh, one of, one of the, uh, requirements that came down through that site review. Uh, is that North Ogden City per the code is requiring a ten-foot sidewalk be installed. So when they went through all the checks of different things that needed to be done, uh, when this was put in, that was determined. Determined to be a, a code that they have to abide by. And they reached out to us, uh, and basically saying that. I think that we'll be above and beyond, uh, just putting in cement. Uh, what they've explained to me through their contractor and what they've need to get done is. They have to move several different, uh, utility boxes. Utility box will be five thousand dollars per box to, to move. And they also have some water lines that will need to be moved. Uh, basically, the, the cement part isn't the issue for them. It's going to be approximately ten thousand dollars for them to install a ten-foot sidewalk. It's currently, you know, just the normal type of five-foot sidewalk. But the issue is that they're going to have to pay for all these additional expenses because of how our code is written. So I wanted to get the city council's thoughts on. This is what, uh, Scott Hess and I in a meeting, uh, with them also, uh, determined maybe an option. Uh, this was triggered through the site review, review process. And I would envision that since these buildings were built in the early two thousands. You know, it hasn't been long since they put in this investment into that sidewalk down, uh, in, at that point. And they're trying to improve their business, they're trying to make it a good situation for North Ogden. And so I was curious if we would look at, uh, changing the code potentially. To allow for, uh, a, a normal five-foot side sidewalk to remain if someone is putting in a. Uh, an addition to their property or they're just building longer their building and they're not a brand new business. And so that's something that I'd like to discuss with everyone. I, I don't know that we can discuss it in length right now, but. I just wanted to let you know that that's something that they are up against right now and I, I've just wanted to make sure everyone knew.
Thank you, Councilmember Dowpas, and, uh, once again, I think where we want to serve the citizens. I would just advise about being careful on changing ordinances on individual requests. Because there becomes very unique situations just about in every aspect, but. I do believe it's, it's fine to take a look at it and see if we can come to some resolution. Um, but I think that, you know, it's. It's, it, it can become a little bit dangerous making exceptions, uh, for. Numerous things because there are many of them, believe me. You'll, you'll find that out as, as you serve on the council, so, but we'll take a look at it. Thanks for bringing that up. Anything else, Count, Councilmember Dowpas?
That's it, thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate your service to the citizens in your listening ear, so thank you. Okay, Councilmember Swanson, uh, Finance, you have a report for us on Finance?
Sure, thank you, Mayor. Uh, we have finance information through. Uh, November, which is forty-one percent of the year. Our general fund revenues are at fifty-three percent. Our general fund expenditures are at forty-five percent. Uh, remembering that we have several large expenditures that are expended at the beginning of the year for the entire year. Like our liability payment and things like that, that ends up, um, amtrizing across the twelve months. As we go through the year. John, do you have the sales tax collections? Uh, slide?
Just put it in a folder, John, so that you can access it. Under sales tax, there you go.
Thank you. You can see the red line at the top is our current fiscal year and. Sales tax trend continues to be above prior year and above projections. Our prior year collections year to date was one point five oh six million. Our projected collections for this year was, is one point four. We've actually collected one point six seven five, so, uh, we're about two hundred and sixty thousand dollars ahead of where we projected we would be. On sales tax collection continues to remain strong. Um, it seems like every other week there's something new that. Seems to be threatening the economy and then a week or two goes by and it goes off and we continue to do well, so. My hat is, again, is off to our departments. my hat is again is off to our departments for the legality that they uh, live every day in running our departments and keeping us sound fiscally. But as it stands right now, we're doing very well. We did receive eighty-nine percent or about one point six million of our one point seven nine five million in property taxes. So we do have that in as well. Any questions?
Counsel? All right. Anything else? Council member Swanson, you'd like to add?
Uh, no, not on finance. Thank you.
Would you mind expanding on the, uh, philosophy of debits and credits not equaling each other? Just, just kidding. Okay.
Uh, how much time do you have?
Uh, we'll call it, we'll call your report the good for, for tonight and.
Did you bring your, and did you bring your wellies or your hip waders or your full chest waders?
Full chest waders, but you know, we'll, we like the sales tax trend. You can see that it has kind of leveled out a little bit. The last couple of months, we had that twenty-eight percent month, I think it was. Uh, but this will have bearing, remember on our, our financial plan that we put in place and John and myself uh, have, uh, have met with Jamie just to get the base going, uh. And as soon as council member Swanson gets feeling better, we'll kind of give him a little insight on some of the discussions. So. Okay, thanks for those reports. Uh, at this point in time, then we'll go to the, uh, public comments, item number fifteen. So if any of the citizens have any public comments that they'd like to make, uh, now would be the time to do it. Please limit them to three minutes. John, if you would watch and, uh, if you just raise your hand online, we'll make sure we provide time for your comments.
Uh, we've got a comment from Tate Seacrest.
Okay, let's hear it from Tate.
Good evening, everybody. Thank you for the opportunity and, um, appreciate, uh, JD and your support and Scott Hess and meeting with us several times over the last month or two in regards to, uh, the sidewalk issue. Um, Rich Waynsgard, I think he's on here as well. Uh, he keeps getting kicked off, but uh, he and I, uh, clearly are neighbors right there. Uh, we are in the process of doing a lot line adjustment, uh, joining the parking lots. Um, in so doing, we're finding out that, uh, this has become much more difficult than anticipated uh, due to the expenses associated with it. Uh, as JD mentioned, um, you know, this is a, a large, large amount of money. It's to the tune of probably close to fifty thousand dollars. Um, and we're going to fine tune that price, um, with bids and things that we still have coming in to do everything, but we simply are asking, um, for some consideration um, to not have to carry that whole burden, uh, in change. Whether that change happens or not, whether, uh, we ask the city to find a way to help us or do something. Um, you know, so that we're not faced with that entire cost. Uh, it's extensive. Um, so a, at this point, uh, anything and any consideration and help would be, um, much appreciated. Thank you.
And we surely will take a look at it. You've got our commitment to, to look at it. So.
Thank you.
John? Anyone else with their hand up this evening?
Uh, not at this time.
Okay, we'll just wait a short period of time. Make sure everyone has a opportunity to comment if they would like. Okay, any, John?
Nope.
All right, let's move on to item number sixteen. This is comments. Counsel, have we heard anything from citizens that you'd like to make us aware of at this point in time? Any comments from counsel? Council member Ekstrom?
Yes, I've just kind of been emailing back and forth from Nate, whose last name is escaping me, but that we were, had the presentation about the approval voting, which I'm kind of enthusiastic to try. He just kind of wanted to know, um, what the rest of the council kind of thought about the idea and, um, whether or not we would be willing to draft a letter to send to the legislature about that. So um, I guess I'm just kind of want to get a little bit of a straw poll to see what everybody thought about it.
Okay, once again, I've heard or read something where the legislature is considering making ranked choice voting the method of preference in the state. Um, so I don't know what the status is with that and how it, if it's into this style of voting. But I'm wondering if that would be more appropriate to address in our uh, our planning meeting, our planning session. Is he, does he have a timeframe? Does he need it very quickly, uh, since the legislature is considering ranked choice voting as the preferred methodology?
I think it would be helpful to get it as soon as possible. I do not like ranked choice voting. So I would, I would definitely prefer the approval voting over ranked choice myself.
Yeah, I think that's a slam dunk. And unfortunately, the legislature will make that decision, but, uh, she's asked, uh, counsel what your thoughts are if you'd be willing to write a letter of support.
Mayor?
Council member Swanson?
Uh, I, I think what Nate Allen and, uh, his co-presenter are trying to accomplish through my conversations with them is to get the option of approval voting uh, as an allowed option. Uh, it seems you're correct. There is a bill and it seems like ranked choice voting has some strong legs under it this session and may become the way that the state of Utah does voting. Um, I think approval voting is a preferred method from what I've seen. I don't have a problem if we wrote a letter, but I think we ought to discuss it as a council. I don't think vote at the Capitol will go until the end of, towards the end of the session.
So is your preference to wait till we have a planning session or would you like to discuss it this evening?
No, I think the planning session, it's only what, uh, week and a half away, two weeks?
Okay, it looks like council member Ekstrom is in agreeance with that. Thank you, council member Ekstrom for bringing that up. Is there anything else, counsel?
Have one thing.
Council member Swanson?
Yeah, just one thing. I, I had a resident reach out to me a couple of nights ago and asked the council to get on the weather pattern and please increase the snow.
I saw you said we'd get right on that.
So doing, uh, what I promised I'd do tonight. So counsel, uh, please start pulling in your markers.
Well, perhaps you could borrow the snowmaking machine up at, uh, Wolf Creek or something and we could get that over to Kurt's place.
You know, I, I bet we could make something happen.
All right. Council member Dow Paz, so it looks like you had a comment.
Yes, I just wanted to see, uh, the, the reason that I brought up the previous situation with the Waynsgard and Seacrest property uh, was to get at some initial feelings of, of what we could do. So I, I knew that it was too soon that we would able to get, we would be able to get an official agenda item on something like that. But I, I did want to at least get an indication, um, and maybe some initial discussion from the council on that if it would be possible. I don't know if that's appropriate or not.
I would suggest council member Dow Paz that maybe you and Scott come up with some specific recommendations for the council to consider in our work session. Uh, that way I think we'd be more efficient if, uh, if you and Scott could come up with some recommended solutions. I think the council's commitment is that we'll look at it and, and see what we can do to be fair and equitable. But I, I think that would be more efficient if that works, uh, like council member Swanson says, we're ten days away maybe from that work session.
I'll work with Scott. Thank you.
Was that, is that okay?
Yep, I'll work with Scott.
I just don't know what we'd come up with tonight, JD.
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay. Thank you for bringing that to us. Appreciate it.
I would like to make a comment about, uh, I was going to say this prior to JD's, uh, to councilman Dow Paz's comment anyway. Sometimes it, I'm just going to throw this out. But, um, you know, sometimes when I hear things like, and I'm not certainly trying to, uh, uh, you know, I'm just going to say this, you know, when we, when we confront these incidents in the city where citizens are coming to us and, and, um, you know, asking us to take into consideration certain things. It, it sometimes it just, it just feels like incidents like, uh, Tate Seacrest and Rich Waynsgard. It kind of almost feels more like a quid pro quo. Kind of a tie-in agreement. We'll play with you guys if you'll just play with us. And I, I worry about that perspective. So anyhow, that's all I'm going to say.
Okay, well, I think our commitment is we'll listen. That, that should be our commitment to all of our citizens. And if there's a solution that's much better than what's now, well, you know, we surely need to learn, but I do believe we have to be careful. Uh, because our ordinance become meaningful, meaningless, uh, some cases. If we don't, if we're not defensible in what we do, but I think it's, it's fair to look at everything. So thank you, council member Severing, for your comments. Um, anything else from the council? John, Susan, do you have any comments tonight?
I do have something. I just wanted to say thank you for, um, having Kirby here at the beginning of the presentation and, and being willing to listen to some different ideas with, um, the recorder's office and and with the minutes and, you know, I'm going to start looking into how we do our agendas and different things, just so that we're kind of more in line with it, you know, moving in a direction that's transparent, I guess, making sure we're doing what we should.
Uh, and Susan, thank you, uh, for your efforts to look, uh, things in a continuous improvement uh, attitude. Um, I've always believed that there's room to get better. Once we think we've arrived, that's when we fall off the cliff. So
Agreed.
Really, we really appreciate your efforts to look at things, uh, from a different perspective and make recommendations that'll help us get better. So thank you.
And the work session is next Tuesday, February first.
Okay. Uh, hopefully you've got the things, uh, to get on the agenda that we've talked about tonight.
Um, we've added them to our packet. John and I sitting here, looks like we've both been adding things, but we'll just have to get with Scott to see if he can get the land use one that quickly because we generally get the packets start put together tomorrow. So.
Okay. Thank you. Any, John, do you have any comments?
Uh, just one feedback that we got through our city's online submission form. Uh, someone just wanted to comment on how much they like the light at Alberta and four hundred east. Uh, they just said that it's so much safer for them as they try and cross four hundred east there and they appreciate the city put that in. So.
And I would just add to that, that the, uh, the police are, uh, watching that intersection carefully along with intersection at twenty-six hundred and Washington Boulevard. Um, a lot of citizens have created their own turn lane. I, I think we all feel for the fact that we don't have that turn lane and it backs up, but just as a reminder, it is illegal to go into the shoulder of the road to make a right-hand turn. And, uh, the officers are there to make sure that, uh, we have a safe intersection and we'll continue to see what happens there. Um, EDOT's in, in control of that. Uh, I do have a couple of things. I don't want to, uh, prolong things too long, but I think we can get done by eleven. Um, I would encourage you to think strongly about the CJC. It's, it's not an all or nothing proposal. Um, discussion at WACOG was some cities, you know, have commitments for their ARPA funds, some don't. But I think the key is, is that the county is looking for, you know, a, a reasonable, at least, if not complete commitment from the city. So uh, we, we can discuss that in our, our work meeting coming up. Counsel, I just wanted to, uh, mention, as we all know, it's, it's budget time uh, coming up. Uh, this year, we kind of started it last year, but this year we'll have some additional changes in it. Uh, I would expect that you would be very involved with your departments um, in the planning process. And by that, I mean that you would make sure that the proposals they have to spend the money that's allocated to them meet our criteria of being attached to our, our priorities of having an end game in mind that we can tell if we're getting a return on that. And to make sure that their expenditures are within the guardrails that we've set. I would prefer, uh, that to take place so we can have meaningful discussions uh, in our budget meetings without boring people to death, but, uh, I would expect that you would be very involved, uh, with your departments in the budgeting process. Um, I would like to make mention of our, uh, retention and recruitment situation that, uh, we are planning on making a budget amendment for. For those, uh, the public that are with us, uh, police officers, the market is very, very tight. Some agencies in our county began a program to build their, uh, force that put us at a disadvantage. So we have implemented a program that provides a five thousand dollar retention bonus for our officers over the next year period of time paid in, in certain increments. We've also instigated a referral bonus for any city in the employ, uh, employee in the city who revert, refers a, an officer uh, with experience to our force that's hired and stays with us. They will also be rewarded. At this point in time, initial results and nothing's for sure until it's for sure. That we have hired a officer with four years of experience that we think is directly related to the referral and retention recruitment bonus. And we've been able to retain another officer who is considering going to another agency. Uh, I believe that this is much less expensive than, uh, hiring officers and training them and or impairing the safety of our city because of the decrease in, in officers. I'd also report that missile, Mr. Castleberry has began his uh, assessment of the culture and things we can do to retain. He's in full swing on that and hopefully we'll have his report in a short period of time. Uh, I would also make mention, uh, I would like you to do, uh, some research and be considering one of the major items that we'll be addressing this year as the council is our wage and benefit budget. I think just about everybody who's not living in a cave, so to speak, understands what's going on in the marketplace. And so as we enter into discussions on this, John is putting together some information for consideration, uh, in the budget. But any information you can gain and come prepared for discussions in that regard would be very helpful. Because it's going to be, uh, substantial. I think we owe it to our citizens to make sure that we're retaining uh, employees, uh, to meet the, the needs we've outlined. So if you'd please do that as we get prepared for budget discussions. And I can't remember, uh, counsel, if we discussed this last time. I'm not sure we did. But John and myself have had a discussion and it's kind of in line with Susan's approach to things on continuous improvement in the city. Um, we've got great employees. We've got a great city. But there's always room for improvement. So we've asked Scott Hess, in addition to his responsibilities as director of our planning department, to take on the responsibility for developing a continuous improvement approach, working with each department to gain an understanding of, uh, the processes we currently have in place. Uh, what we can do to automate those or to become more efficient and effective uh, to help our employees with the limited resources that, uh, we've got right now. So I'm appreciative that Scott has agreed to take on that assignment. Uh, I think it's something that'll be very, very beneficial to our, our city. And it'll help Scott understand, uh, you know, more and more what goes on in, in the city. And it'll help Scott understand, you know, more and more what goes on in, in the city. Any comments, concerns or questions on those items? Okay. Well, we'd look for a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
So moved by council member Ekstrom. Anybody want to stay longer? If not. Have a good evening and thanks for your service.
Thanks, mayor. Thanks, council.
Thanks, mayor.
Thank you.
Hi, thanks, everybody.